Listen, bound God, we thank you for this great day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for your love and your kindness. We pray your peace, God, over this university. We ask that you continue to watch over our students, faculty, staff. We pray for your guidance even in this space, in this meeting. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dean. Trustee Martin? Welcome, trustee Lewis.
Trustee Martin? Hey, Tim. Tim, you gonna turn that up?
Yes, we can.
Okay. We can hear you.
Okay. The March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, Academic Affairs Assistant Committee is now charged to order. Before we get started, we need to make certain findings on the record regarding the necessity for participating in this meeting by electronic participation without a physical person. And according to the Tennessee Copyright Act, Section eight forty-four one oh eight B two, as chair of the Academic Affairs Assistant Committee, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Chuck City. Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee to conduct its March fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting without a physical person of accord. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee is scheduled to take up important committee matters with a timely action by the committee, including but not limited to the approval of a new academic program, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other language, and a change in academic program degree designation from Masters of Arts in Education to Masters of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Science. Participation by electronic means is necessitated by members in person, absence due to affordable travel issues. Accordingly, I move that the committee finds that the participation by form of committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Questions on the motion to find participation by form of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Dr. Thompson, please call the board.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Andre Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Bill Johnson?
Yes.
We have three eyes.
Thank you. We will proceed with the meeting with the board process. At this time, we need to call the board. Herr Thompson, please call the board.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Andre Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Bill Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Sean Wimberly?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Committee members, if you cannot hear or speak to other committee members or board members, please say so now. For each committee member participating electronically, please identify any individual who's present in the location from which you are participating. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the November sixth, twenty twenty three, Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting Minutes. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee November sixteenth, twenty twenty three Meeting Minutes are included for your review in the board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. I move for the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteenth, twenty twenty three Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting Minutes as contained in board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteenth, twenty twenty three Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting Minutes as contained in your board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Herr Thompson, please call the board.
Trustee Martin?
Hi.
Trustee Andre Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Bill Johnson?
Hi.
Three eyes.
Thank you, sir. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages. The materials for this agenda item are included for your review in the board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Dr. Glover, I'm asking you or your designate about information and connection with this agenda item, please.
Thank you, Chair Martin. I'm gonna ask if Provost Melton will present this.
Good morning, everyone. Chair Martin, members of the board. On behalf of Academic Affairs, College of Education, we're asking for the approval of a new academic program, certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages. We also have Dean Janet Finch. If she would just step up very briefly for any background information. And we have documented the need. We have coordinated with Metro Nashville Public School as well as our community. Thank you, Dr. Finch.
President Glover, chairperson called the musical board trustees.
Thank you. Presi- can you hear me? Okay. President Glover and chairperson called members of the board of trustees and to all of my other colleagues. It is a first good morning. It's a blessing and a pleasure to be here. I'm here today on behalf of the university and the College of Education where we operate in a spirit of excellence. I'm here today requesting your approval to proceed with the offering of what we call TSAL. TSAL is stands for Teaching English to Stu- to Speakers of Other Languages. Now, we are very well situated to offer this certificate program. It meets a growing demand. The demand is is for qualified TSAL instructors is rising globally and within the state of Tennessee. This program will equip individuals with a certificate to teach English outside of the United States. It also enhances the diversity and global efforts of our university. A TSAL certificate will attract students from diverse backgrounds interested in teaching English globally. It fosters intercultural understanding and prepares graduates to work effectively in an increasingly interconnected world. And lastly, it builds on existing strengths. We have the strength in our teaching and learning department within the College of Education through our faculty. Therefore, we would not be asking for any additional resources. So I stand before you this morning pleading with you to please approve this requested certificate, TSAL.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. And on behalf of the Office of Academic Affairs, we also make the recommendation for approval.
I move approval?
I have a question.
Thank you. I'm not sure who that was. I think I heard someone say they have a question.
Sure.
Actually, we should go ahead and have a second, and then we have a discussion. So are you are you seconding?
Second.
Okay. Andre Johnson, second.
So how does this, how does it work? For example, if if I wanted to teach English to a group of people that spoke Swahili, and then someone else wanted to teach someone who a group that spoke Mandarin. So are we being, is this about teaching methods? Is that what this is or what?
Well, methods would be included. We are not requesting approval of any new courses. We currently have courses already in the teaching and learning department that would suffice approving, putting together this certificate. It will only take eleven credit hours.
Yes. And to say that we already have the program, this is almost a streamlined way. Instead of getting a full degree, and many of our public schools' teachers have a degree already, this will give them the certificate to go forward.
Okay, do we have any additional questions or discussion? I move for the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English to speakers of other languages as contained in your board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Is there a second?
I should, there was already a second made, so that was just, that's to call the question now.
Okay, so the questions on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program in the College of Education, a certificate in teaching English of speakers of other languages as contained in board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Herr Thompson, please call the board.
Trustee Martin?
Hi.
Trustee Andre Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Bill Johnson?
Hi.
Three eyes.
Thank you. So the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is-
Thank you very much.
-the approval of a change in the academic program degree designation from the Masters of Science in Education to the Masters of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Science. The materials for this agenda item are included for your review in board materials for the March fourteen, twenty twenty four board meeting. Dr. Glover, will you or your designate provide information in connection with this agenda item?
Thank you. That's Melton.
Yes, thank you again, board members. We're asking for approval of academic program modification for the Masters of Science in Human Performance and Sports Sciences. Dean Barredo.
Good morning, President Glover, Chair Martin, and members of the board of trustees. On behalf of the Department of Human Performance and Sports Sciences and the College of Health Sciences, we'd like to request approval for the awarding of the MS Master of Science in Human Performance and Sports Sciences in place of the Master of Arts in Education, M A E D. So as a brief history, the Human Performance and Sports Science Department used to be housed in the College of Education, and the previous department's name was the Department of Health, Physical Education, and Recreation. And so that department developed the M A E D degree for the purpose of of teacher training. Since nineteen ninety-four, the the program has continued to evolve and change its focus. It continues the the teacher training, but it has evolved with the times to include sport administration and and exercise science. And so when the there was a college restructuring in two thousand twelve, the H P E R department went under the College of Health Sciences, and the name has changed to H P S S, Human Performance and Sports Sciences. With a new focus in in sport administration and exercise science, we'd like to change the name to an M S degree instead of an M A E D degree because of a change in focus and the changing times. So we'd like to request the board's approval.
And we thank you, Dean Barredo, and on behalf of the Office of Academic Affairs and with our review and investigation, board members, we are asking for approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or any discussion? I move that the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee to recommend to the full board the approval of a change in the academic program degree designated from the Masters of Arts in Education, the Masters of Science Degree in Human Performance and Sports Sciences as contained in your board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of change in the academic program degree designation from the Masters of Arts in Education to the Masters of Science Degree in Human Performance and Arts Sciences as contained in your board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Herr Thompson, please call the board.
Trustee Martin?
Hi.
Trustee Andre Johnson?
Hi.
Trustee Bill Johnson?
Hi.
Three eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is fact accreditation update. Information pertaining to this agenda item is included in your March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board materials. Again, I'm asking President Glover or her designate to provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is informational discussion item only, so no vote will be required.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Melton?
Yes. I am so pleased to share with you, on behalf of SAC C O C, our accrediting body, we are in good standing and proactive in moving moving forward with our five-year plan. We have Dr. Anderson here, who has been leading the charge for us. In fact, we have already started to meet in preparing our reports. We have had two outside consultants to work with us. And again, I want everyone to realize, this is a moving target of excellence. And I am pleased to share with you all, on behalf of Academic Affairs, not only do we adhere to these standards, we have the spirit of the standards for quality. So we have a full update. If you have any question, again, we have Dr. Anderson here, leading the charge. Dr. Anderson, would you stand to be recognized? President Glover, it is a good point where we are in good standing, but we're more than in good standing. We are moving forward as a role model for all.
Thank you. That's our report. Uh, trustee Martin?
Thank you for that. And President Glover, I'd like to thank you and your entire staff for working on this. If you have never been a part of going through this accreditation, you have no earthly idea of the time and work, of the effort that goes into this. And to hear the excitement in your voice that you are in good standing, I appreciate that because I know that you have gone through a lot to get to this point. So thank you to everyone, to your participation. And Dr. Glover, thank you for your leadership always in making this work and having the university to be the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Academic Affairs Report. Information regarding this Academic Affairs and Student Affairs agenda item is included in your March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board materials. President Glover, I'm asking you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
I'm asking you to provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. Again, this is informational discussion item only, so no vote will be required.
Thank you, sir. Trustee, thank you, trustee Martin. Dr. Melton, you wanna continue?
Yes, oh, this is the good part. Trustee Martin, board members, Dr. Glover, you have within your package a brief overview. We could have filled this entire folder up, but I asked our deans and our chairs just to give us a summary from each department as well as our units. You have in in front of you, from the College of Engineering, our outstanding faculty member who secured a Navy grant, making us one of the first H B C U's. You have the College of Health Sciences noting the grant agreement that they have for the public health administration and health services. You have the College of Liberal Arts. By the way, tomorrow with the Black Design Conference, people coming from all over the world, starting today for that conference, that's Dean Morgan Curtis. You have the College of Life and Physical Science, of course, with the coordination with the Levi Watkins, as well as the College of Public Service, cultivating change, creating a supportive environment. You have the graduate schools going out and doing innovation and recruiting, addressing some needs, and bringing back what we consider excellence and in competition with the other universities, private and public. Again, on behalf of the Academic Achievement and Retention Center, we have academic tutoring, everyone, seven days a week, online, on ground, in the hospital if you're there, on if you're in the dorms, on campus, and we are enhancing that with technology, technology of virtual reality, augmented reality, esports. And we are able to document an increase in retention. We have a retention report as well as engagement. We also have the Honors College. By the way, next week is Dean Jackson here. Dean Jackson will be celebrating sixty years of the Honors College with over three thousand students. We move to our International Affairs. Dr. Glover and board members, I am pleased to share with you, we have record-breaking data of our Intensive English Center as well as our international global partnership with Dr. Phillips, with new partners coming from all over the globe. Global Online, Tennessee State, eLearn. Ladies and gentlemen, we had a winter storm to hit us the first day of school. On behalf of the Global Online, Dr. C A and her team and all of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs, we were able without a hint to move our entire program and university online, in which we stayed virtually until it was safe for everyone, staff and students, to return to school. We also have the support of Title III that you will see around the campus, as well as our academic career pathways, in which we will have the National Nace President on campus next week. I end with you in terms of the Smart Technology Center that also includes our Endowed Ed and Ten- and Extended Ed. I am pleased to share with you that Tennessee State University is recognized as one of the leaders when it comes to artificial intelligence, emerging technology, and addressing community needs in terms of the digital divide. I end with this. It is a pleasure, I say that passionately, to work with the deans, the chairs council, the faculty senate, and our community in making sure we are excellence in our programs and services. I thank you. I publicly thank all of the Academic Affairs administrators, especially the A V Ps, our support service. We are Tennessee State University.
Dr. Melton, before I ask the question, the first thing I wanna say is thank you. I have had the chance to work with the Success Center, quite frankly, and I use the Writing Center for my law school applications, and they help get my personal statement right. And of course, I'm in the College of Ag, so this is this is amazing stuff. I think this is what makes up our university, of course, the academic piece is the biggest part of TSU. So I do have to ask this question on a side note. So I have been talking with some community members who have been talking with me for, I wanna say, two years now, maybe three before I became a student trustee, and they have been, I believe the board had approved to change the African Studies Department.
Yes, I can address that.
Yeah, so I wanted I wanted to hear, cuz I cuz they have been talking, and I've been talking with them, and part of me is aligned with this type of Afrocentric-
Yes.
-study here at at H B C, so I just wanted to hear if there were any thoughts here.
Oh, yes, I have updates. And again- And again, thank you for mentioning the tutoring, the Academic Center. That's under the leadership of Dr. Johnny Smith, Belinda Lee, Dr. Harris, Dr. Pertle, Dr. Carr. They need to be recognized, because you can attest to the energy, the whole restructuring of that, yes.
Community, like, it's very, I hate to cut you off, but I met Dr. Carr, when he was Mr. Carr.
Yes.
And he came to me, pulled me aside, not only did he help tutor me, but he brought me as one of his mentees, and that helped get me through my second half of my junior year and going into my senior year, so he's, yeah.
Well, he's not doctor yet, but he's in the doctor's room. He will be doctor, okay? Leave it to me. Life is good, okay? But yes, let me address that, and I have Dean Morgan Curtis on hand. Is she in the back?
She's back.
Okay, yes, please come up to the front. Let me share right now to you. We are dedicated. Dr. Glover has provided guidance and support. We will have a major, not a minor, a major here. We are HBCU. This is the place for Africana Studies. And with that, we are restructuring the entire program. I have personally met with some of the community members, and I'm here, so Dean Morgan Curtis and which that department will follow under, will give an update, yes.
Before she gives her update, I do want to just commend you, Trustee Wimberly, for bringing up the Afrocentric conversation today, because we have worked on this for a while. We ran into some roadblocks a few years ago with TBR. We have straightened those out now. I have given the directive to the area, to their college, that we must have, we must have bring back Afro Studies as a major, because as an African-American institution, HBCU, there's no excuse for us not to address it, not to have it as a major. And so we are very close now, and Dr. Melton is all the way in, Dr. Morgan Curtis is in. So now we're just putting together, structuring together, and she's going to tell us more about that now. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for that. So right now, we have Dr. Mott, who is our senior Africana Studies faculty member, is working with the committee on revising the letter of notification to THEC. They asked for some revisions. We had a fantastic meeting during homecoming. We brought together quite a few of the alumni, and they were actually able to provide great letters of support. I've been talking to Dr. Al Hadid, who's given quite a bit of support and a lot of history and motivation to us. As we move through that, we are going to announce very shortly a hiring of a new faculty member, and we're about to post a third position. And so all of that is moving forward, and we're very excited about that in the College of Liberal Arts. I can't announce the new faculty member yet, of course, because that contract is in process, and as you know, nothing is official till Dr. Glover signs off.
You know they're going to say it's on my desk. But it's not there yet, I haven't seen it yet. But so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Goodness.
Trustee Mike, this is Deborah Cole. May I have a comment, please? May I make a comment, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just, I would just like to say that life is good, Dr. Melton.
It is, it is, Dr. Cole.
It is. But it is good, because it brings me such great pleasure to be at other educational institutions and hear about them coming to Tennessee State University to get information on artificial intelligence. I received an email with a number of programs listed on it, and the individual had been over here at TSU from the institution, another institution, and got the information. Dr. Melton has put us on the map with artificial intelligence, and I want to recognize her for that.
Well, thank you.
I do hear Dr. Melton is very well thought of in this area and spoken about very positively from THEC, and I just want to say thank you, Dr. Melton. Life is good.
Life is good. And remember, that's my passion. And Dr. Glover, upon leaving the Tennessee Board of Regents, everyone, to retire, before I could even get a foot out of the door, she asked me to come and help the institution with technology, emerging technology, code and create, to bring Tennessee State in a position where we are recognized worldwide. We serve Chairman Cole as the hub for all of the HBCUs when it comes to code and create and open education. But it is a pleasure, because I cannot do this by myself. I have fifty-one fellows, AI fellows, in this room, some on this board, some over in the audience. We have deans all the way to our students. Tennessee State is the place when you talk about artificial intelligence, from students all the way to our community. So I thank you all.
I'm looking forward to coming and getting some of that education.
Yes, even as my glasses are AI, right, Dr. Pennett? Yes.
Correct. And so, so my question. So I asked a question at the last board meeting. What guardrails are we placing around artificial, the use of artificial intelligence, not necessarily in the classroom, but in our business practices?
Yes.
And so, yeah, the federal government is wrestling with the guardrails for the country, so we must be wrestling with it, too.
Oh, we're wrestling.
All right. So I think something needs to rise to the board level.
Yes.
So that the board can put some things in place in terms of limitations as we explore the frontier.
Yes, so on behalf of this committee and on the federal government, as well as SRB, EB, we are looking at guardrails, but you have to remember, this technology is evolving, it's growing, and thus, we have a moving target. So we have even draft policies right now. We're looking at AI in terms of even preschool, because it's going that low, as well as, but yes, you better believe, we have guardrails, we have best practices and standards here at Tennessee State.
Well, I don't know if the board, I don't know if I, as a board member, would understand what those guardrails are.
Yes.
So I think we need, at this level.
Yes.
To understand, because there are pitfalls, you know, with respect to confidentiality, with respect to permission, and, you know, consent, all of that is part of it. And so we need to have an understanding, and I think state what, as best we can at this point, even if the policy has to be changed, what...
Yes, so, so I'm here, you're asking me to bring back to the board some guardrails, some best practices, and without a doubt, I will bring that. But one I'm working on right now is to help faculty to understand how to use this in the classroom. We have to know how to cite it, we have to know how to vet it, we have to acknowledge it, and again, we have to apply it, but I will be very happy to bring our draft to you.
And probably Secretary Pendleton needs to, you know, look at that as well, so.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yeah, but beyond a review, I think one of the things we might be looking at is either, because based on what Dr. Melton's talking about, is either some sort of board resolution that speaks to.
Yes.
The importance of AI and the guardrails, but at the same time, as Dr. Melton's talking about, it's a fast-moving train, and if they're broad enough so that she's not coming back to the board every time as it evolves.
So before it goes back to the Trustee Martin, we just appreciate everything that Dr. Melton has done, artificial intelligence, her team. We mentioned it yesterday in the meeting when we presented to the Senate. I want you to end this on the fact that how proud I am that we are finally going to bring Africana Studies back. I, I'm happy, it's a part of my legacy, because that's my commitment, having grown up in a civil rights home, and it just means so much to bring that back. So I really appreciate all the hard work that the deans have done, Dr. Melton's done, the whole College of Liberal Arts. I just really appreciate what you all have done on that note. And thank you for bringing up, Trustee Wimberly. Trustee Martin?
Chair Martin, if I can make one quick comment. I want to point out to the board that Academic Affairs and the College of Education have come up with a creative solution. They've looked internally, and so they saw bottleneck in our EDD program to complete, and they come up with a creative, out-of-the-box-thinking solution of a boot camp. They've run it through all the appropriate channels of grad council and curriculum committees and all those kind of things. And probably the most important and the interesting part about this is there's some aged course content.
Yes.
That some of these students have, and they have come up with a revalidation component in this boot camp. And so I personally believe that it's going to drive some changes in some policies that we have in the graduate school.
Yes.
And so I just want to acknowledge that creative thinking and outside the box and coming up with a solution to a longstanding problem. So thank you very much.
And I think the College of Education.
Trustee Mike, we're done.
If this question for comment?
Can I have one more comment, please? I would hope that, yes, I would hope that the guardrails that we put on the use of AI are not more stringent than the guardrails that will be coming out of the federal government, particularly given that this is a moving target and it's moving very fast. And I would hate to get ourselves in a position where, in fact, we're restricting the use of AI from our university in a way that's more stringent than that that's coming from the federal government, thereby making it easier for others outside of our university to take advantage of AI versus those that we serve.
And hi, this is Robbie Melton. Being part of that federal level and regional level, and looking at the innovation and the opportunities and the possibilities of AI, I can assure you that I will do my best to make sure that we are in alignment, but also out front in terms of the enhancement of this tool for teaching and learning and for our communities.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments? Thank you, President Glover and Dr. Melton, for your key presentation. As I was reading through the report, and I was just, and all the things that we are doing at Tennessee State University, so again, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Student Affairs Report. Information regarding this Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Agenda Item is included in your March fourteenth, twenty twenty four board material.
Andre Johnson?
Provide information related to this agenda item. This is our informational discussion item only, so no vote will be required.
Thank you. Dean Stevenson?
Just one minute.
Oh, just a moment.
May I ask that, when you speak, whether you are remote or in the room, please identify your name. I know all the voices, but there are others here that may, would like to know who's speaking, please. Thank you.
Madam President, Chair Martin, Chair Cole, thank you for this opportunity to share and present on behalf of the Division of Student Affairs. Student Affairs has fourteen different departments. Obviously, we're responsible for the wraparound services of the student experience here at Tennessee State University. There have been several questions in previous committee meetings around engagement, and so we wanted to be intentional in sharing what the student engagement experience looks like, and so we've included that in the report. I won't go through all of that, I'm going to highlight a few things. Also have invited some of our student leaders, after talking with Dr., after talking with President Glover, to share some updates on some student engagements as well, and so, including our student trustee, ISGA president, and ISGA vice president, who are all here as well. So let's, let me yield my time to, in the beginning, to allow...
Before you move into that, sir, I would just like to ask that we recognize our student leaders that are present with us. It was my intent to do that a little quicker. I want to say we have Mr. Taylor with us, who is the president of the Student Government Association. We also have Mr. Quinn with us, who is the vice president of Student Government Association. And of course, we have our very own Mr. Wimberly with us. Thank you all. It was a pleasure to be with you all at the meeting that you had, and I was just thoroughly impressed with your leadership and your capabilities and intelligence. Thank you for joining us.
Before they go, before they start, let me just share with you in terms of student engagement. This is not something we just pull out of a hat. This is around best practices and research. We are trained in the area of student development. I mean, we understand the Chickarin theory of student development, the seven vectors of student development. We understand CAS standards. We're trained under CAS standards for every one of our areas. We understand what it looks like and what it should look like on a college campus in terms of developing students, and so we're very intentional in terms of what happens. And so we don't just have engagement events, but we have outcome-oriented engagement, and so we're measuring, what did the students learn? How does this motivate their development? How are we intentionally putting them in scenarios and opportunities and preparing them for leadership in the outside world? So engagement encompasses all of those things that are goal-oriented. But also, let's be very transparent, students, if they wanted to just get a degree, they would go online. They want a collegiate experience, right? And so they're here for collegiate experience, and so we're very intentional in that space. As the chief Student Affairs Officer, I have to advocate. When I sit around the table at the cabinet meetings, I'm advocating, I'm pushing, I'm pressing. There's a lot of competing interests, and so, you know, I have to shake VPL in hand several times, and, because he's so supportive, we appreciate that. But again, I'm advocating for students. When I start getting excited at the cabinet meetings and tell them that gorillas are going to be on our campus, or NLE chopper, and they just stare at me like, you know, yay glow. So I mean, I just have to make sure that I'm sharing the student experience and what's important to them. To that point, one thing that we're excited about, I shared this with President Glover many months ago, of the importance of getting our Olympic-sized swimming pool back online. It was an eyesore, it was not allowing the students to have those experiences, a pool that's been down for several years, not also including the academic experience associated with it. And so Dr. Glover used the power of her presidency and said, make it happen, and so it has happened. And our Olympic-sized swimming pool will be cutting the ribbon on that this spring, so we're excited about that. We also have our Tiger Pantry back up and going. I want to thank Dr. Heisch for his leadership in that role. Students on campus, we have to make sure we have that safety net to make sure they're not hungry, and that we are somewhat in a food desert in terms of the opportunities that are around us. And so we've been able to solicit donations to make sure that our Tiger Pantry is viable. We have now well over forty thousand dollars in our Tiger Pantry Foundation from solicitation. We just got ten thousand dollars from Publix and from Kroger's to make sure that we are taking care of our students. Now, again, remember, we have all kinds of students, we have international students, we have students that can't go home, students that are here over the break, and so we want to make sure we are repping our arms around them, and that Tiger Pantry is allowing us to do that. So I wanted to tell Dr. Heisch, thank you for your leadership, and Chris, thank you for jumping on board to get that thing lifted up and moving in the right direction. We have a leadership TSU class of forty-seven dynamic students that was just, we just had their, they were just sworn into the program, and so we're very proud of those students. This is our elite group of students that are selected by faculty, staff, administrators that go through an intense leadership training program. This cohort makes the eighth cohort, and again, they are exposed to amazing, amazing experiences. So again, let's talk a little bit about student engagement on our campus. We are... We are excited about this spring. We have eight of the nine Greek organizations that will all be presenting this spring that are going through intake at this time. We've had new student organizations that have come online. You're talking about student leaders who are just making it happen and making sure our students are getting out of their room and engaging with each other. So this time I'd like for President Darrell to share and then also Trustee Wimberly.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Darrell Taylor. I serve as the Student Government Association president. I would like to invite my vice president, Chrisando Quinn, to report on behalf of student organizations. I will be thorough, but I will not be long. So I want to highlight some of the amazing things and opportunities SGA has been able to provide for students this semester. Considering this is my, my final meeting with you guys, my term is coming to a conclusion, I would like to say thank you all for your leadership throughout this academic school year. We've been able to, we've titled ourselves the Innovative Eighty Third Administration, and I truly believe we've been able to do some innovative things. So with that being said, I'll begin with a project that Dr. Glover and Dean Stevenson really extended their hands on helping us out with, which is, which is an appreciation project for the aristocratic bands. We understand how impactful they are on our university campus, and we want to ensure that we are showing appreciation to the band and their counterparts. So we were able to give them a token of appreciation with the hoodies. We were also able to work with some leadership members of the band to discuss potential improvements to their practice facilities moving forward. So we're hoping to be able to present something to VP Allen and the board, hopefully by the end of the semester, as far as what we can do for our aristocratic bands moving forward. We've been able to introduce executive committees to SGA. So this is the first time SGA has actually opened the door to allow for students to meet with them directly as relates to concerns of the student bodies. So we have three committees. They're all student led with students that are not in, you know, currently in leadership positions, but they are collaborating with SGA. So the three committees are Student Concern, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, and Civic Engagement and Public Awareness. We've also implemented a $2.1 billion task force where students of different demographics are able to prioritize what we feel like might be the best approach on the student end of the $2.1 billion perspective. And this just comes towards advocating for the, the funds, educating the students and ensuring that we are on top of this as this issue continues to progress. And we also have been able to work with the residence assistance and the housing team during the transitions from the hotels back to campus and several other occurrences with housing. So we're really, really appreciative of Ms. Parr and the housing team for being so willing to work with our student leaders. That does mean a lot. And thank you, Dean, for your leadership in that area as well. We've had a huge mission this semester, which was to really brand SGA to be a little bit more personable and relatable to the students. So we've really been intentional on a lot of big program where we can really network. So our Student Union Board of Governors, which is a branch of SGA, has been very intentional on some of those things. So we had a Super Bowl watch party, we had a Mardi Gras party, we had a lot of different opportunities for students to be engaged on campus with our courtyard Wednesdays, with our athletics. We've had Greek nights and org nights for students to show up in numbers supporting our athletics team. And they actually just left Indiana over the last past week to participate in supporting our Tigers in the OVC conference. Our Office of First Year Experience has done a dynamic job this semester. We're allowing for freshmen to become more acclimated to their campus experience. We've done a lot as far as Black History Month and implementing activities throughout that. And our representative for First Year Experience has received a national award in recognition of his student leadership and service. So we're really proud of him for that, Mr. Chandler Cotton. As it relates to our representative for financial aid, we have been able to complete a virtual FAFSA completion challenge to make sure students are engaged with their FAFSA and they are completing it and, and get rates. So we did award $25 gift cards on behalf of the Office of Financial Aid and our representative, and we're glad to have collaborated with them for that. And to spring back to housing a little bit, we had a conversation with students regarding the priority in which different classifications receive their housing assignments. And we allow for the students to have an opportunity to voice their opinions. And thankfully, the housing department was able to adapt the process of priority when it relates to assignments. So for example, seniors will receive priority with the campus apartments and juniors will receive, you know, secondary priority and so on. As far as our Student Election Commission, I did mention earlier, my term is coming to a close, unfortunately. But however, our Student Election Commission is preparing to host our Elections Week, which is always a very, very engaging time on campus for students. That includes a presentation of candidates, debate, a big food rally in Gentry, and just a lot of opportunities for students to engage with their future student leaders. And that will be all for the beginning part. And thank you, Dean, for mentioning the Tiger pantry. That is something that we're also very excited to collaborate with Dean Heisch on implementing.
Alrighty, good morning, you all. I'm Chrisando Quinn. I currently serve as the SGA Executive Vice President. Along with that, I serve as the chairperson for the General Assembly. And the General Assembly is consisting of all of these student organizations and clubs at TSU. So I wanted to give a brief, brief report on what the General Assembly has done thus far. As Dean Stevenson said, we do have new organizations this semester. We accept new organizations on a two-year cycle. So this is the year that we accept them and they're able to program as a registered student organization or club at TSU. We have four organizations that have been reactivated, including our NAACP chapter here. We have American Society of Mechanical Engineering. Those are just the two of the few that have been reactivated this semester. We have 17 new organizations here at Tennessee State University. They have been accepted both this semester and this past semester. So they've done a really great job of keeping the students involved and making sure that all students feel included at TSU. Yesterday, we had an organization fair that consisted of 15, not 15, but 50 organizations just broadcasting what their organization is, their values and what they, they stand for within their programming. A few ways that I've decided to get the organizations and students involved on campus. I have a VP Instagram account where I do Org of the Month monthly, just so that all organizations, both big and small, feel very recognized and appreciated at TSU. This semester, NPHC has been doing their organization week. So this week, the Alpha Psi chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated has decorated the hallway. So I invite you all to visit the student center and see the decorations that all of these organizations have been paying for and decorating the student center with. But organization engagement has been really great this semester. I'm excited to see what they'll do with the remainder of this semester, but that is the conclusion of my report.
So as we conclude, as we conclude, we would like to highlight the emergency meeting that we've had with students and recognition of the House and Senate bills that were proposed. So students are still in a very uncomfortable phase of this entire situation throughout this past year. And we're, as SGA leaders, are intentional on making sure that not only we are educating the students on the updates that are occurring, but we're also serving as a truly liaison from the students to either the president's office or the board of trustees or whoever in which the students would like to have their connection with, relative to answering their concerns regarding these issues. So the purpose of the emergency town hall meeting was to allow students to understand the severity of the decisions that are being held, that are out of our hands, they're in the hands of the state of Tennessee. We understand that, but we are intentional on making sure that we have a intentional response. We're intentional on making sure that we're continuing our advocacy, and we're intentional on making sure that we have answers. So with that being said, the students are feeling directionless about navigating the, the board issue, the $2.1 billion issue and the $250 million issue as well. And as we mentioned, our goal is to educate the students, but we are wondering what is surrounding the silence in response to this issue? We're requesting further information on what's being negotiated on behalf of our university, what is the plan, what we tell the students, and when we have a response. But unfortunately, it's been too silent on our end of this issue. We want to ensure that we are essentially not going down out of fight because the students value representation within the board of trustees and the president's cabinet, and we are not necessarily conceiving consistent updates and communication regarding this issue. So we would love to have future conversations with them, members of the board, to gain further clarity on what we plan to do moving forward.
And before I speak, I want to add to that. Darrell, I think that what may need to happen is the meeting that we held at the humanity tour was great. The students, they responded very well about what was going on when Dr. Johnson and Chair Cole came to speak about the bills. A lot of those students did not truly understand what, what direction we were heading, how it's going to affect the university. But after that, a handful of students came to me and like, okay, now I get the situation. I think it's, we need to do that and more. If that means talking with SGA, if that means repeating that part two. But I think there should be more intentionality behind communicating with student leaders so that we can get this information across to the students who are sitting, a lot of them are kind of on the, on the fence. Should I care? Why should I care? Is it, does it matter? And quite frankly, our students don't just read newspapers anymore. If it's not on Instagram, if it's not in their face, they don't really care to know what's going on. And if, but we can make them care, we can show them what's happening. So I just wanted to add to that before I go into my student affairs.
Okay. Thank you, students. I do want you to know that yesterday I did, and over the last few days, we have brought it to the attention of legislators that I can, rarely can I get from my door, from the building to my car without at least one or two students stopping me, asking me what's going on. They, they're making, no, they have two major issues. One, not to tear up our university and our governance structure, our board. And two, are the $2.1 billion that seem to have been, have fallen off the agenda. Those are the words from students and students like you. Sometimes you all are saying the same things to me. And so I, I want, it, it's good to go on record letting people know that the students are, I mean, what is, is doing to this, what this is doing to the students, being teased about you don't have a school no more, you're going to join with UT. Although we know, we know as adult leaders that that's not, that's not the agenda being presented to us, but when students are being teased and telling things that's different, it, it has a level of believability. And I just, we heard you when you said something, you, you're concerned about the silence, that nothing is being said or done. And so that's, that's, that's something that I'm not going to address, but maybe somebody else may want to address. But we appreciate, those are the comments we appreciate from you as student leaders. I mean, you all are some of the best student leaders I have encountered. I've been in higher education a long time. You're so thorough, you go to the issues, you decide, you decide what the issues are, and you're pretty much on point. So when you said to me, you had two issues, one, making sure we get the money, and this seemed to be a distraction to you. And two, that the governance structure is important, just says, why is TCU being treated differently? And Chrissy, Susan to me, you just said, you asked it to the governor, why are we being treated differently from other universities? That's a valid question to ask. And so I, I commend you all for the stance you're taking.
Thank you. Dr. Cole, may I say something, please? First of all, I want to say personally and, and, and from the board, I apologize for the fact that I feel like sometimes we don't communicate as effectively with the students. But what I want you to know, it doesn't mean we're not fighting. The, the thing about a, a war is there's many battles. And we're fighting several fronts at the same time. And I want you to understand that the first thing we have to do is to, to ensure the integrity of this university. And when I say the integrity, I mean moving forward as a, as a front. If it's not us, it's got to be somebody. But it's got to have, they have to have the right agenda and the students at heart. This is not our fight. This is a fight for the students, for the alumni, and for all the people who've come before us. But I want you to know, please, that we are working tirelessly. We are meeting daily, we are meeting after hours, we are spending money to try to ensure that you all have the best opportunity and that you get what you bargained for. All right? First thing we have to do, in my opinion, is to shore up where we are now. We have a legislature with a super majority. We have a legislature with an agenda. And we have to fight the battle in the, in the most, I would say, in the, in the smartest way we can, right? So in my opinion, we got to overcome the first hurdle of the integrity of the university, keeping the university together, not causing a mass confusion with a presidential surge, with, with, with disbanding the board. That, that's the first thing. Then the second thing we do, once we get that done, we can go after what's rightfully ours. But I want the students to understand that there's steps involved in this. I love the, what I would call rebellious culture of, of, of your age group. And it's, it's so great to see you guys go out there and protest and get things and get online and cause change. And, and sometime that works. But I want you to understand, when you're dealing with certain entities and when you're dealing with things that are outside of your control, it's sometime best to figure out the right strategies to figure out how to get to the end game. But it is important that while doing that, we communicate with you guys effectively and ensure that you all know what's going on. And so that's what I apologize for, not that we're not doing the work, but the fact that we haven't necessarily communicated with you all in the best way to let you know what's going on. And to be quite honest, sometime you, you have to be careful in your communication because your strategy sometime needs to be kept secret. You have to understand that everything can't be said at all times. And so I do want you to know that on behalf of the board, on behalf of the president, we, we are working at it. We really are working at it. We all have different expertise. We're using our personal expertise, our personal relationships, and I commit to do better. I, I talked to Trustee Wimberly a lot on a personal level, and, and he called me about the meeting. I was out of town, I wasn't able to attend. But we, we have to do a better job of communicating, so I will commit to do that. But please understand, I want to reiterate, we are working on it diligently. And whatever the outcome is, we're going to get the money. I'm telling you that. We're going to get the money. But first, we have to ensure that the integrity of the university is, is, is kept in the way to proceed and that we don't have to worry about the day-to-day drama. Because that's what this is, it's drama. And it's affecting the students, it's affecting us, and it's affecting the great things that have been done to this university in the last few years. So again, I apologize and I want you to know, we are working on it.
As the chair, thank you, Attorney Johnson, very well stated. Stated it just like I taught him. But very well stated. And I want to thank you for inviting me to the meeting. It was an awesome meeting. The students were prepared. They did a training session during the meeting to teach the different bills, et cetera. I agree with Attorney Johnson that we probably do need to do a better job of communicating. I think though, that at sometime at the end of the day, after I've worked the job, I'm so tired after working TSU's free job, that I don't necessarily maybe get to talk to whomever I need to talk to at the end of the day. But know that we are Tennessee State University's Board of Trustees until we are no longer TSU State University, Tennessee State University's Board of Trustees. And we are committed to what needs to be done to maintain this university and the tremendous status in which it is. So we are committed, very well stated, Attorney Johnson. And we're here, we will be here for you, okay?
And quite briefly, I have two, two points that I want to drag this on long. I know we have this in the agenda. We can speak about this more later on. The first thing I wanted to, to lay out there on record, I'm going to law school. So my interest is, is there, is there talk about lawsuit? Is there a talk about legal battles? Is that, is that in our power? We can talk more about that into our, our own agenda, but I wanted to lay that out there. Is that possible or do we?
Uh, let our legal.
Okay. What I'll say about that is I think everything's on the table. I think that in anything, the first thing you do is to try to negotiate, right? Lawsuits are expensive, they are time consuming, and you don't always get the results you expect. The governor gave us some of the money that was owed, he included in the budget, we thank him for that. But the new budget didn't have any, any money for Tennessee State. So I think what we need to do is wrap our hands around everything. We, we need to wrap our hands around everything and see where it goes. But all options are on the table, and we'll figure out what the best course is.
Okay. And my second point, and we can talk offline too, I think, I think there may need to be a conversation between the board and SGA leaders before at least their term is up. I liked what we had with the students, but I think perhaps a talk with them, with SGA. I, I believe, I know for a fact we can trust these leaders. And also on record, I want to say that it's been a pleasure working with you all. And I know we've, we've been here four years and to come from freshmen to now seniors and see how far all three of us have came, it's been a blessing. These two are the hardest working students I know, and I work pretty hard myself. And I compete with Darrell, I compete with Chrisando in terms of who works the hardest, but they're, they're But, um, their, their teamwork, their dedication, their commitment to this university beyond, is beyond without a doubt. Um, one of the greatest things I've seen. And I'm just happy to, to, to have been here at this time with them. And like I said, we grew up together here, so it's, it's, um, it's a bittersweet. But, um, so yeah, so thank you all for the work that you've done. Um, and, and I just can't say that enough, but I, I do think that we need to have that conversation about how we're moving forward with the, with these issues.
Thank you, trustee Wimberly. We definitely appreciate your leadership.
Darrell and Kashanda, thank you for sharing your report. Uh, um, also, I, I don't think we, we said, I know Wimberly, you're gonna add something as well. Uh, but I, I want to announce it because we're so proud of Sean, who has been accepted into two law schools. I won't say the name, but he's been accepted into two law schools, so we're so proud of our student trustee. Let me share, let me share two more things, and then Wimberly, if you'll wrap up with that, with the other engagement things, um, that I just need to make sure I share with, with, with this committee. Uh, one is that I've, I've been intentional about making sure we give a housing report each time. Again, we, we appreciate, uh, trustee Pennick for his leadership in terms of when we were navigating some very tough waters, uh, around housing. Uh, we're in a good place. As of March 1st, we have no students in hotels. All of our students are on, on campus. Now, I will say, it was tough to get them out of that hotel. When you have somebody, you know, cleaning your room every day and, you know, so. And again, most of the students that were in the hotels, we, we allow self-selection. So these were students who selected to be in that space. And so, but again, uh, we're happy to have them back on campus as we had the room. Um, we did something, uh, this year that I think was a success. We're gonna continue to do it. One is, uh, during spring break, I've had many students say, Dean Stevenson, you know, I live far away. It's tough for me to go back home. Uh, some students don't have home environments that's conducive for them to come back home for a week. And so we had to be sensitive to that. So I asked my staff, why did we make all the students go home over spring break? And of course, the answer was, we've always done it that way, right? So we changed that policy this year to allow students to stay on campus. And some students needed to work. Some students weren't able to go home. We had over fifteen hundred students that stayed on campus, and we provided some services around them being here. And so again, policies that don't make sense, that is intentional for students, that, that helps contribute to them being successful. We're also adding what's called year-round housing. Again, we have students who, who are coming from, from, um, foster care, coming from different situations. They don't have your typical homes to go back to, right? This becomes their home. And so we have to, we have to, uh, navigate our policies to adapt to that. And then finally, as relates to housing, uh, this year, we will have graduate housing for, for the first time. So we're excited about that. That application will, will, will open up in May for, for our graduate students. And we're very, very proud of, of that space. Again, um, we, we have applications for our first-time freshmen and our returning students and, um, for, for housing for the, uh, for the fall, and that's going very well. Very proud of Ms. Parr and the housing staff who have done a wonderful job. The final thing I need to report on is around our counseling services. And, um, again, uh, I just want to make sure I'm giving, uh, very accurate information. My grandmother told me, said Frank, a lie will go around the world twice before the truth can get his shoes on. And so we've had some untruthful things said about our counseling services. And the truth of the matter is that we're very proud of the direction that our counseling service is going in under the, under the direction of Dr. Collins, our interim director. First of all, uh, for the first time in a very long time, the staff has worked really hard, and we have no waiting list at all for our counseling services. Thank you again, Dr. Collins, for the many long hours that you and your staff have put in to make this happen. We were not utilizing the appropriate technology in our counseling services, and we've upgraded that. We, we initiated the titanium system through a contract. This keeps the medical records of those student notes. We weren't using that. We had, it is to be, it just needed to be corrected, and it has been under our new leadership. We also have a system called protocol that we will begin working with on next week that allows for after-hour services. We did a, we did a contract addendum so that we can do virtual, um, uh, meetings with students, um, and use some of those spaces there, so we're very proud of that. But the thing that ma- that makes the most sense that we did in terms of utilizing what we already had on campus was since I've been here ten years, we have not had a relationship with the, uh, psychology department, which is, you know, just makes no sense because our psychology department is an accredited doctoral granting program with expertise out of this world, one of only two HBCUs accredited in the nation. So it would make no sense that we're not using those master and doctoral-level students so that they can practice on campus instead of going to other places. Well, that has changed, and now we have seven of those master and doctor-level students who are helping us in our counseling center, getting their hours, getting trained, and are able to relate to our students. Just a small fix that made sense. Picking up the phone, meeting with Dr. Webb and others in that department. We're grateful for that. It just makes sense. A wonderful marriage between academic affairs and student affairs that allows us to be successful in the care of our students. And so again, we are staffing up. We have, we now have, I know some board members had asked me about this. We're now gonna have a permitted home for our counseling center. And so, again, based on CAF standards, um, location for counseling centers matter, right? And so how students access their service, it matters where it's located. And so we've been trying for years to get a permitted home for our, uh, counseling center. Right now, it's housed adjacent to our career center, and that's just not best practices. And so we're moving very, very quickly. I met with Will Rafford yesterday to talk about the design and the plans and how quickly we can get that moved so that we'll have a state-of-the-art, uh, counseling center where students can go and feel comfortable and have that space. So I wanted to share those two updates. The main thing I want you to know is that our counseling services is going in the right direction. And we're fixing some things that needed to be fixed. We're getting the right staff. It is, it's a tough job to hire for. I've, I've had to fly and recruit. It's a tough job. Uh, because it, you know, to, in that space, you got a lot of opportunities. And so it's really tough to hire, but we're working really hard, and I want this board to be familiar with that. And, and, um, any other narratives are just false narratives because we're very proud of what's happening in that space. So I'll yield at this time and allow Mr. Wimberly to share also some other, uh, points that he needed to share.
And I'll be brief. I know we may be going over time. Uh, I wanted to add to the student affairs report. Um, first off, Dean Stevenson, uh, I was going through the, the, the book, and I'm like, this, it keeps going. So this, this is great, and I've seen, um, just the atmosphere of the campus change from the, how it's been the past two years and then coming from COVID. Uh, so I appreciate that, um, as being a student and just watching everyone kind of have fun again and get that, that TSU spirit back. I wanted to add, I saw that, um, like the game room was listed here. And I think this is very important because I've had a chance to visit other universities. And one thing that I've been really wanting to hone in with TSU is increasing our, str- str- strengthening our value proposition. What makes our university better for these students versus this university or that university? And when I look at some parts of our campus and compare it to other schools, they have spaces that help enrich or strengthen this community amongst themselves. And one space that we have is the game room. Um, so some, some students and I did a survey about a, about a hundred students, and a lot of students are wanting to see, um, renovations and updates to the game room. And I think that, um, in the plan moving forward, that that should be an avenue that we take. I have ideas. I have, uh, uh, plenty of responses about some things, like including LED lights, a neon sign. Maybe have students come down there, uh, paint on murals, or even have a community service to repair some of the walls, um, um, down in the game room. But I think that that is a great start moving forward when it comes to building that, uh, this space for students outside of the academic experience. Um, as I want to keep that at that point. We, we could talk offline about moving forward, but, um, I just wanted to add that and put that on record.
No, thank you for sharing it. It's a space that most faculty and staff don't, have probably never even visited, but it is highly utilized. You can go in there and find hundreds of students hang, hanging out and having a good time. So thank you for lifting it up. That concludes my report, and I'll answer any questions, uh, from the chair that you may have.
Oh, Dean, I don't have a question, but what I would like to commend you on is recognizing, one, that we did have a problem, and two, finding solutions to those problems. I thank you, uh, from your report. It's a very thorough report. I think that we have addressed a number of the very significant issues that we needed to address. Thank you so much.
Chair Cole, if I can, um, just ask a quick, a quick question or a comment.
Please.
Uh, Dean Stevens, thank you so much. You, you know, I've been asking for data, 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 data. And I appreciate you, uh, 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 providing that. And I appreciate, uh, you recognizing, and all of us recognizing, that an engaged student body is the lifeblood of this university. And so the engagement is the key. So thank you very much.
Trustee Martin.
Thank you. I'm just, I'd just like to, uh, assess Tennessee State University's student leadership. When you look at, um, all the things they have done, they're doing, and they continue to leave. It's just amazing. Uh, I have a hard time, as old as I am, embracing all the things that have happened and are happening now. You've gone through COVID, uh, you've, you've gone through housing issues, uh, you're, you're going through a presidential purge. I could just go on and on. So I just want to thank you all for your leadership and continuing to just stand, uh, for what is right and, and struggling for your university. You know that Tennessee State University is not only one of the best HBCUs, but one of the best universities. So I'm just so proud of all of you all, and I know in the future, we will, we will be able to say, I remember when, because you all have got to do great things. Uh, I want to thank, uh, President Glover and Dean Stevenson for their leadership. Uh, as, as Chair Cole normally says, this was a robust report. And so I, I just have notes all over the place. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, Attorney Johnson for, um, his embarrassment of, of how, uh, sometimes we have fallen short. But, uh, I agree with everything he has said, just know we all, every single board member is out there working. And we have certain lines here staying in, but every single board member is out there working hard for Tennessee State University students. So thank everyone for all that they are doing. The next item on the agenda is the report on the tenant trustee board resolution. This will make sure we're done with academic affairs and student affairs committee agenda item is included in your March 14th, 2024 board materials. President Glover will be providing pertinent information related to this agenda item. And again, this is informational discussion item only, so no vote will be required.
Trustee Martin. Uh, I fail to be very specific in my comment to Dean Stevenson, and I, I do apologize for that. Dean Stevenson, I wanted to specifically thank you for the counseling center. Yes, for, for, yeah, for taking care of what needed to be done with it, for making it, uh, a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Trustee Wimberly ready for the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe I sent this, um, proposal to you all, I want to say about two weeks ago. Maybe a month. Have you all had a chance to look through the proposal? Okay. Um, essentially, it's, in my time as being student trustee for the two years, I tried, I truly believe this position is of high importance. I think that now, considering the climate of what the university is and what is needed on behalf of the board of trustees, that this role needs to be supported more. Um, and in doing so, I believe that the, the student trustee needs to have the ability to appoint a student trustee committee. Um, and in doing so, the board is almost, it's almost like a tool to help improve the board's, um, of work. And everything that I've, that I've done in my time here, my research, uh, my surveys, my thoughts, my comments, has come from the committee that I built unofficially. But I do believe now that it's time to have that approved by the board and written, and written somewhere. Cause my time here is up. It's not Sean's, um, student trustee's committee. It's the student trustee committee. Um, so I wanted to get that written or officially as a, as a resolution. I wanted to get you all to approve on that, and I want to hear you all's questions and inputs. I have, uh, been, I've worked with this for about two years now, and I've worked with students. I have, I have information on before and after, um, when I first, when I did not have a committee at the beginning of my tenure and then to having one now, um, how efficient I have become when it comes to talking with nine thousand students, uh, working with faculty, working with state legislators, um, and trying to complete our these responsibilities as just one student. Um, so I'm, I'm open for, for questions and discussion about this resolution.
Uh, how are you? I have a, a couple of comments. I think this is a great idea. I think that from a resolution perspective, I'd like to see some things in here that I think would help both parties. I, I would recommend that you have a, a ment- the trustee would have a mentor from the board that's kind of assigned to them that can help them navigate some of the things. Um, kind of be the liaison between the board while you're the liaison with the student. Um, secondly, I think that we might need to work on some of the language a little bit in here, um, to just ensure that we meet all of the protections and legalities that we need to meet in working with this. Um, one thing that, that concerns me, you're very capable and, and reasonable, but I'm not sure if I like the statement, the student trustee will determine individually the activities and initiatives. We might have a nut at some point, right? And there needs to be some type of, of, of mentorship that happens, all right? So what I would suggest, I don't want to wait till the next board meeting to address this, but what I would ask is that maybe I can work with you on the language. We draft some things up, and then maybe, uh, penalty benefits, can we poll the board maybe? Or do some type of, uh, email type of vote?
Perhaps what we could do is we could have the board, um, delegate and designate and authorize you to, um, uh, to complete the resolution item that lays out that the items they talk about in terms of a board mentor and some other things. So the board can delegate to you, uh, the authority to complete the resolution items.
And with the criteria, so it won't have a one point eight unless it's a one. I mean, you want to have some criteria for the students.
Correct. So, so I would take on that responsibility. I would work with, uh, Mr. Wimberly. I want to get it done like in the next week or two. I'm not trying to pass it. But I do think we need to work on it a little bit just to fine-tune it and send something back for, that you would find acceptable.
Yeah. So, so again, what we'll do is, this is just a report item. In the main board meeting, there is the approval of board resolution. What we do is change that to really the approval of the board's de- delegation of authority to you to be able to finalize the resolution.
And go ahead.
With the president.
Thank you.
Yeah, in consultation with the president.
And, um, so now would that be to the, the name? So whenever your term is up and my term is up, does that, is that up for?
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna work on the resolution. It'll have no names in it. It'll have nothing to do with you or I. But we'll, but we'll have the authority to come up with a resolution and then work with the president and present that to the board. What I'm trying to avoid is waiting till the next board meeting, because we don't know if we're gonna have a board.
Right.
Right? So I want this done. So I think it needs some work, and I don't think it's ready for today, but I want it done very quickly. So I want to work with you in the next week or so on some language on it. If that's okay.
Yeah, keeping in mind, one other thing, keep in mind, is that we've had a series of one great student trustees. As you mentioned, you never know what's gonna be in the future, but also this resolution is gonna be applicable to all, all student trustees moving forward.
So let me, um, let me understand. Just a point of clarification. So the real intent behind it is, uh, is a continuity of leadership or transfer of knowledge from one group to the next group? Is that right? Or?
As in the groups being the committee?
As in the groups being the committee. So what, so if there are issues, if there are things that, uh, are important to roll over to the next student trustee or roll over to the next.
Yes.
So what we're trying to do is ensure that the knowledge is transferred from year to year. So, what we're trying to do is ensure that the knowledge is transferred from year to year.
Yes, that, so, that's, that's, that's one of the reasons too. So, with that committee being in place, because when I came into the role, I'm just by myself, so I talked with the previous trustees, but it was more about the role, but their work was lost, their ideas were lost, their knowledge was lost. The idea is that this committee, right now, we have a Google Drive, or we have a whole platform that we use. Right now, the idea is that this can get passed on from trustee to trustee, not forcing trustees to follow anything, but like myself, I would have loved to have built whatever I wanted to do for my tenure. I'm off the knowledge of what my previous trustees had. And additionally, the committee is there to have support and make the role more efficient. In my time, it took several months for me to learn how to research, learn how to poll students, learn how to connect with students, learn how to bring it back to the board, how to, to do all of these responsibilities at once. And I believe that that is inefficient.
I think what would be equivalent to it is that the faculty staff representative has a faculty staff committee group that lift up ideas that the individual brings to this space. And so the student, faculty said, I'm sorry. And so the, the student trustee is in terms creating a committee to help lift up, poll, have ideas, so that they're prepared when they walk into this meeting and already have taken the temperature of students and are lifting those in this space. And so I think that's the idea. Again, like Attorney Johnson said, just a little cleaning up, because even those committee members that are appointed, you know, we can't have students who are disciplinary probation or who are not academically where they need to be on the committee or who are walking around and not even in school, just pretending to be, right? So, you got to have some, some thresholds there too. But that's the thrust of what Trustee Wimberly is doing. I think what this can do is go to what we were just talking about earlier. I think this can help, but if we set this up right, it can help that communication and that lack of, lack of, you know, we, we, everything will just be more clear. And then you'll have the support from whoever mentoring you on the board or whoever's there to go with you to those meetings and give you advice. And, and then they can bring that back to what I call the elders on the board, right? Because sometime our languages are different. Everybody talks about love languages, but I can't understand any song on the, on the radio right now. So, I, I, I think that you guys speak a different language sometime, and we need to, to be better at understanding your language.
Do you have any additional questions or comments?
As Chair Pendleton, is there any specific move that we need to make to give Attorney Johnson the authority to move through with this along with working with Mr. Wimberly and President?
Yeah, so this is only a report item here. We're going to have this as a separate agenda item in a main board meeting, and that's when we will do the delegation of authority at that time.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. So, we can get it done today at the next meeting. Thank you.
Trustee, thank you for coming up with, with student trustee work motion. Again, Attorney Johnson, it's definitely not an assistive question, making sure that a movement forward. Are there any additional questions or comments? I just want to say that it is an honor to serve as chair of the, this committee, to be able to walk proudly and say that everyone involved on this committee and existing on board have made some amazing changes and have strive for excellence with the leadership of President Glover and the faculty, staff, students, leaders, everyone. I should thank you enough. From the outside looking in, people don't always know how much work goes into everything, so it's very easy for you to make comments and say what, what's not being done. I don't say that we have been perfect, but what I do know is that we have worked hard and we have made some major changes. And as Chair Cole said, we identified so many things that need to be done, and as we identify them, we have made major changes and that necessarily what we seem to do. You know, it's hard to make something out of nothing. And, and that's what, what I say we have done. So, I just want to say that I am just so proud of chairing this committee, Chair Cole, for allowing me to do this. Dr. Glover, thank you for everything you continue to do. With your vision and your leadership. So, is there any additional business?
I, I'd like to also just thank you, Chair Martin, for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hearing one.
Oh, here's one.
Adjourn the table.
Okay, hold on. Here's one. Robbie Milton. On behalf of our academic esports, under the leadership of Dr. Chizum, TSU won the number one 2024 NFL esports in Madden. And again, you all have to understand, we are the only HBCU with an academic esports. We pathway video gaming into our STEM careers, and we play to learn and we learn to play. We are number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Milton. As you say, life is good.
Life sure is good.
I can give first, since the first committee adjourned the meeting, any discussion? Hearing one, the question from the motion to adjourn the meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roster.
Actually, we have a second.
Second.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Martin. Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
With three ayes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. We are adjourned.
Good morning. The March 14, 2024 executive committee is now called to order. Before we get started, we to make, to make certain findings on the record regarding the necessity for conducting this meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum present. In accordance with the Tennessee Code annotated section 844-108B2, as chair of the committee, as chair of the audit committee, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees.
This is for executive.
What did I say? Audit?
Yeah.
I apologize. Executive committee to conduct this March 14, 2024 meeting without the physical presence of... Excuse me?
Executive. Executive committee, not exec.
Executive session, executive committee. Now that I have, I will start again, okay? In accordance with the Tennessee Code annotated section 844-108B2, as chair of the executive committee, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees Executive Committee to conduct its March 14, 2024 meeting without the physical presence of a quorum. The committee, the executive committee, is scheduled to take up important committee matters which require timely action by the committee, including but not limited to hearing important reports on the presidential search process pending legislation affecting TSU and its secretary report. Participation by electronic means is necessitated by members in person, members in persons or absence due to unavoidable travel issues. Accordingly, I move that the committee find the participation by a quorum of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Is there a second? Trustee Lewis?
Or Chelsea Martin.
Or Trustee Martin. Is there a second?
I second that I have my phone on mute. Sorry.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, second.
Richard Miller, I second.
Thank you. The question is on the motion to find the participation by a quorum of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
We have a quorum present.
Okay. The motion carries. We will proceed with the meeting with a quorum present. Good morning again. At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Present.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Okay. Committee members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other committee members or board members, please state so. Now, for each committee member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location for which you are participating. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 16, 2023 executive committee meeting minutes. The minutes for the executive committee, it's November 16, 2023, meeting are included for your review in the more board materials for the March 14, 2024 board meeting. I move for the executive committee to recommend to the full board the approval of the November 16, 2023 executive committee meeting minutes as contained in the board material for the March 14, 2024 board meeting. Is there a second?
I guess.
Any discussion? The question is on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the November 16, 2023 executive committee meeting minutes as contained in the board materials for the March 14, 2024 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Three ayes.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is an update on the presidential search process. I will provide this report. Information regarding this update can be found in the board materials. Thank you. All right. At the November 16, 2023 board meeting, I discussed the presidential search process, including the appointment of the search committee, the retention of a search firm to assist in the search, and the framework of a timeline for conducting the search, all of which will culminate in a board decision as to the selection of the next TSU president. Following the November 16, 2023 board meeting, the search process proceeded immediately with the search committee conducting its first meeting, the development of a timeline, and the holding of listing sessions with specific groups, including board members, students, faculty, staff, and alums. Through these listing sessions, a presidential profile was developed and posted on the TSU board website and the search firm's website in December. The recruitment process was also formally launched in December with the search form soliciting, search firms soliciting and receiving application materials. The search committee met again in February to discuss logistical matters and prepare for the evaluation of applicants. The search process continues on track as the search committee met in early March and scheduled a series of meetings for later in March to identify up to 10, up to 10 semifinalist candidates for search committee interviews at the end of March. These are candidates that will move forward for further consideration. The search committee plans to move approximately, approximately four individuals forward for future consideration and evaluation. This process will also involve board interviews, opportunities for involvement by the governor, which he has been notified in writing of that, the naming of finalists, and an open forum on campus. As I noted in September 14, 2023 board meeting, the board will make a final decision on the selection of the next TSU president. The board anticipates naming a new president via a special called open meeting, sometimes in late April. It is the intent and the movement of this, of the search committee and I as chair to make sure this timeline is followed and that we do follow through with this entire process. I also want to thank everyone on the presidential search committee for the assistance, and this is a very important piece of work for Tennessee State University, and I appreciate all the work that everyone has put in. I would like to make one comment about the search committee. I've received a number of questions relative to the size of the committee. The size of the committee is to allow for there to be participation from all groups affiliated with Tennessee State University, the foundation, the alums, the faculty, the staff, the students, the community. Again, the Board of Trustees will make the final decision as to the president, and the governor will, has agreed to speak with up to three candidates that we move forward. Are there any questions regarding this matter?
Yes.
Yes.
Did I understand that the finalist would be made, the fourth finalist or whatever would be made, would be announced? Is that, is that right? Did I hear that right?
No.
Or however many finalists there are?
We are moving forward four people for further consideration.
Okay.
Up to four.
Okay.
Up to four for four consideration. Secretary Pendleton and I met to discuss the procedures in detail to make sure that we were in compliance with the state of Tennessee law as it relates to selecting of presidents for the institutions. You want to make any comments on that, Secretary Pendleton?
Yeah, so, under law, anyone that would be deemed a finalist then would be subject to public disclosure, so you're, you're correct.
But that would be up to three, okay? I know it says approximately four. And then, of course, we did talk with the governor's office for the governor to interview the three to four that we would have.
Would the prospect of being disclosed publicly deter any good candidates from being considered?
We spoke with the search firm. The search firm, in the information they put together, they have documents that the candidates have signed, knowing that if they move forward to that process, that their names would have to be disclosed. That is not our desire. That is a requirement. Am I not correct, Attorney Pendleton?
Yes, it's no longer deemed public, so it's announced. But the search firm has the folks, at the time that they are moving forward, would be deemed a finalist, they first get their authorization saying, "We're about to name you a finalist. Are you fine with off, with, with moving forward?" So, at that time, a person could say, "Um, I'm not comfortable with this. I'm out."
And they would sign a document. If they are comfortable with moving forward, knowing that it would become public information, they sign off on that. We can't afford just to move one person forward, because we don't know what would happen. There has to be a background check. I've been on other presidential search committees, and we get the person, and then they decide that's not what they want to do. So, we're trying to take the path that is the best to give Tennessee State University the best opportunity for its president. But thank you for those questions. Those were things that we did meet on to make sure that we were in line, because we don't want any problem with this not being done in accordance with the laws that have been laid out. Anyone else? Okay. But again, to the entire search committee, to the Board of Trustees, to everyone that has been involved, all of you that were part of the listing sessions, I thank you. There was a very robust meeting that we had on the last committee meeting. Everyone was involved, and I appreciate that involvement. The next item on the agenda is an update on the pending legislation affecting Tennessee State University. Secretary Pendleton will provide, will provide a report on this item. Secretary Pendleton, please provide your report. Is that okay with you, Dr. Glover?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cole. As you're aware, and, and received an update on, we have really two primary bills. There's another piece of legislation as well that we'll, we'll, we'll talk about, a bit about. Senate Bill 2109, which is the bill that would transfer governance to T.HAC in the event a board is sunsetted or vacated. That has received passage throughout the entire Senate. So, it went through Senate That has received passage throughout the entire Senate, so it went through Senate Committee and then to the floor of the Senate and, and passed. That is now scheduled for House action in, in committee. We believe on Monday, that, that will be heard for House action. Even with the House Committee vote, it would still need to move through the House for a vote, for an entire vote on that before then, assuming they're both comparable and similar in language, then it would ultimately have to be approved by the governor. So that's Senate Bill twenty-one zero nine. You know, TSU has spoken and testified with respect to that piece of legislation. The other institutions have not really raised any issues or met with anyone to discuss that, so they're, they've taken, shall we say, a more quiet position with respect to that. Senate Bill fifteen ninety-six, which is the bill that originally would have moved the termination date a year, essentially giving the board a one-year extension, was then amended to vacate the board and reconstitute new board. That has passed in two Senate Committees, the Senate Government Operations Committee, and then yesterday, and the Senate Education Committee. That still would need to go to the Senate floor and be approved by the entire Senate. As for the House, it is, it is working its way there. It could be assigned potentially at some point in time to the House Committee. There are discussions going on more of the leadership of the House with respect to that bill in terms of potential modifications to it. So that is really a more of a work in progress related to Senate Bill fifteen ninety-six. There's also another bill that is scheduled for calendar that would really sort of attempts to provide for a floor, shall we say, of matching funds for TSU that would be two times the rate that the federal government requires. And that is working its way through the House and the Senate. I know that Dr. Glover has had conversations with legislators on that particular piece of legislation and, and, and what potentially we could do in terms of amendments. That doesn't guarantee a, a ceiling or doesn't set a ceiling. It provides for a floor on that. So those are the pieces of legislation that are primary ones for TSU. Are there any, any questions?
Just a comment. So that, it's the land grant bill? For the land grant match for federally, two times instead of the one time?
Yes.
Trustee Penelton? I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna ask, so that's, it's an amendment to the original land grant bill?
Or? To the original? No, it's, it's, it's just an original bill that was.
It's new. Who filed, you know who filed it?
That has been filed by Senator Agbari. And I know that also, Dr. Glover, you want to comment, who's involved with that particular piece of legislation? That's land grant. Okay.
Secretary Penelton, is there another bill, House Bill twenty-three forty-six or something that?
So House Bill twenty-three forty-six is the, the Senate version of Senate fifteen ninety-six.
Okay, alright.
With that, that concludes the report.
Okay.
Update.
All right. Any more questions or comments?
What's that bill? It's about Senator Agbari?
Yeah, but it's, hang on a quick sec. That is Senate Bill was listed as the, getting the House bill. The Senate Bill is nineteen ninety.
I would just like to follow up with some comments from what Trustee Martin said earlier, and that is, one, I am very proud of the work that Tennessee State University Board of Trustees has done. I came on the board when we, during the first, the initial board. I was on the inauguration board. I'm very proud of the work that's been done. I don't think we can find a university in this country that doesn't have some type of a problem. And I say to you what I said earlier, and ask you to please continue to work with us. We are the Board of Trustees of Tennessee State University until we are no longer the Board of Trustees of Tennessee State University. Thank you, Secretary Penelton, for that report, okay? The next item on the agenda is the Secretary's Report. Secretary Penelton, please, did you have any additional comments? Dr. Glover. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Secretary's Report. Secretary Penelton, please provide your report.
Thank you, Chair Cole. Just a couple of items. We talked, I believe, at the last board meeting about some of the discourse that was going on on campuses across the country regarding some divisions between students from more supportive of Israel and students that are more supportive of Hamas or some other groups. And the U.S. Department of Education conducted and invited some universities, including Tennessee State University, to participate in listening sessions to discuss what's going on in their respective campuses, what types of measures are putting in place or that's already covered to address the issue of really the balance between the First Amendment free speech, at the same time protecting students from a hostile educational environment. So I was invited to participate along with Dean Stevenson in, in a listening session that was hosted by the U.S. Department of Education. And we participated along with some other institutions, University of Michigan and some other institutions. And we provided, I thought we had a good discussion in providing some of the things that we're doing at, at TSU related to protecting those rights and, and really trying to make sure that students are coming together. College is a great time to have that exchange of dialogue and debate rather than creating hostile environments or not allowing folks to, to speak. So, or sometimes these things have gotten a little bit violent on some of the campuses. So they heard from us, and we were able to speak to that. And you pretty much had your general councils and student affairs deans that participated in these listening sessions. So I thought that that was a good opportunity for TSU. As many of you also know is that under the Trump administration, they passed new regulations on Title IX. When the Biden administration came in, they then moved to modify those regulations, and they're going through a process that includes, after the drafting, it gets forwarded to the White House Office of Management and Budget for consideration. There's a group of us, TSU is a part of the APLU, which is Association of Public Land Grant Universities, and I participated on sort of a national council of attorneys that help advise APLU. A group of us was invited to speak with members of the White House as well as the U.S. Department of Education, OCR, to speak to the Biden administration's proposed regulations on Title IX. And so we addressed a number of items, including the roles of Title IX coordinators, the complexity of the regulations and things like that. We're reproviding some input on a conference call that we participated in. So what we're trying to avoid is with each administration, it seems to kind of go back and forth between a Republican administration that puts in certain place, certain things into regulation, and then you get to a Democratic administration. And depending on the changeover that you have in administrations, that can be quite taxing on universities to be going back and forth. And so that is something that was conveyed as well. And that will conclude my, my report unless there's any questions.
President Glover, do you have any comments? Okay, thank you, Secretary Penelton, for that report. Is there any additional business to become before the Executive Committee? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? I move that. Okay, any discussion? The question is on the motion.
It's seconded. He moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. Is there a second, please?
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and probably the second. The question is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Secretary Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Martin. Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Three I's.
Okay, the motion is approved. We are adjourned. All right, good morning. Good morning again. The March fourteen, twenty twenty-four Audit Committee is now called to order. Before we get started, we need to make certain findings on the record regarding the necessity for conducting this meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum present. Wrong paper, okay. In accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated Section eight forty-four one zero. Eight forty-four one zero, eight B two is chair of the Audit Committee of the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees Audit Committee to conduct this March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting without the physical, fiscal presence of a quorum. The Audit Committee is scheduled to take up important committee matters which require timely action by the committee, including but not limited to receiving a report on internal and external audit items and reviewing outstanding audit issues. Participation by electronic means is necessitated by members in person's absence due to unavoidable travel issues. Accordingly, I move that the committee find that participation by a quorum of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Is there a second? Yes, Attorney Secretary Penelton, what's wrong?
I apologize. We do have a physically present quorum with you and Pennick.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, fine. Okay, so we will suspend with this, not overlooking you, Trustee. Pennick, okay, I'm sorry. So we will suspend with that because we don't have to establish it by electronic means since we do have a quorum that is here, and we have another committee member, I think, on the line, which is Trustee McKenzie, okay? All right, at this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Here.
Trustee McKenzie.
Present.
Trustee Pennick.
Present.
We have three present.
Okay. All right, committee members, if you. Committee members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other committee members or board members, please state so now. For each committee member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location for which you are participating. The next item on the agenda is the approval of November sixteen, twenty twenty-three Audit Committee Meeting Minutes. The minutes of the Audit Committee November sixteen, twenty twenty-three meeting are included for your review in the board materials for the March fourteen, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting. I move from the Audit Committee to recommend to the full board the approval of November sixteen, twenty twenty-three Audit Committee Meeting Minutes as contained in the board materials for the March fourteen, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The question is on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteen, twenty twenty-three Audit Committee Meeting Minutes as contained in the board materials for the March fourteen, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting. Secretary Penelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Present.
Trustee McKenzie.
Present.
Trustee Pennick.
Present.
Okay.
Three I's.
Motion is approved. Uh huh. Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report on internal and external audits. Regarding this Audit Committee agenda is included in your board materials for the March fourteen, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting. I am asking President Glover and Director of Internal Audit, Dr. Renee Forbes Williams and other designated personnel to provide pertinent information related to the agenda item. This is an informational discussion item, so no vote is required.
Dr. Forbes is up here now.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Starting on page thirty, details of the external audit. External audit, draft of the statewide single audit for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Currently, the information in this audit is deemed confidential, and this item has been moved to the executive session. Starting on page thirty-three. Details of the internal audit report. First, we have the audit of the president expenses. We didn't have any findings, and this is in compliance. The audit expense report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to comply with Code Title Forty-nine, Chapter seven. President's salary benefits and other payments, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four eighty-two. Travel, which is noted on Schedule A, starting on page thirty-three, three thousand, three hundred and nine. Businesses' meals and hospitality, Schedule B, twenty-three thousand, six oh five. Other expenses, thirty-three thousand, six forty. Other expenses relating to the president office, total three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seventy-six. Total expenses, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one forty-two. Again, no findings. We find that to be in compliance. Any questions? Okay. On page thirty-eight. In compliance with Policy zero one dash oh seven, conflict of interest disclosure forms. We have a total of one hundred and fifty-one employees listed. Our submission rate, which you'll note on Table one. For the initial reporting date, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, we had seven hundred and forty submitted, which was forty-eight percent. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we had one thousand, fifty-three submitted, sixty-nine point four percent. As you notice on Table two, conflict interest form review, eight hundred and fifty-four, no disclosures. We had disclosures of one hundred and thirty-five. We had twenty-three forms with no signatures, and we had forty-one forms that was incomplete, and that totals to one thousand and fifty-three. That's on page thirty-eight, starting on page thirty-eight.
Can, can I inquire, and I don't know who to inquire to, why we're having trouble with people filling out these forms and signing these forms? Does anyone know?
Sixty-nine percent submission rate.
That is a concern.
With accuracy, with accuracy is being an issue.
Well, thank you, Trustee Johnson, for that comment, and, and, and Dr. Forbes, when we talked, you know, we talked about what had been done. Would you please give an update to Trustee Johnson on steps that have been taken? You know, it's, I, I don't think we could possibly read the minds of why individuals don't do what they should do, but I think you need to inform the Board of Trustees what steps have been taken and what the, what, what measures will be taken to hold individuals responsible.
Okay, permission has been granted by the chair for Ms. Cynthia Howell to discuss that further.
Good morning, Chairman Coles, President Glover, and the members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your question. And thank you for the opportunity to make my first presentation in front of the board on something I'm very passionate about, and that's ethics and the conflict of interest forms. You know, although we've been concerned about the submission rate of the, of the conflict of interest forms, which over recent weeks has led to discussion of automating the form itself, I contend that the low submission rate is only a symptom of a flawed process. See, many organizations refer to the COI form as the form that must be completed each year, and when the submission rate gets to a certain level, then we check the compliance box that it's done. However, just like with any business or government agency in terms of operations and risk, we have to ensure that the decisions made at TSU are not influenced by the private interests of faculty, staff, or even the Board of Trustees. Thus, it's imperative that all individuals connected financially to TSU or making decisions on behalf of TSU disclose financial interests and/or potential conflicts. So I actually contend that the COI process should be viewed in three phases. The first phase is campus awareness, second is submission and collection, and the third is the review and resolution of disclosures. Under campus awareness, I think we should embark on a marketing or awareness campaign explaining why completing the form is actually necessary. And additionally, many individuals may not understand the specific questions on the form, and they simply leave one or more of the questions blank. We should equip employees with information about each question so that they understand the importance and feel comfortable that they are truthfully answering each question. Now, the second stage is submission and collection process, which is currently a nightmare. Our current manual system of distributing the form via email and receiving back scanned forms that are returned as either PDF, or some people don't have access to a scanner, so they take the pictures of the pages one by one, and sometimes you get them upside down, but, so it's, it's difficult. So for the twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three submissions, I had to manually review all one thousand, fifty-three files submitted and then rename them using a standard naming convention for ease of use and in case people like you, Dr. Johnson, have additional inquiries. In essence, we had to create our own repository of forms. So stage three is actually review and resolution of disclosures. And in this part of the process, this is part of the process we actually really never complete, although we examined one thousand, fifty-three forms and we marked whether a disclosure was made. About sixty-four percent of them, which Dr. Forbes already said, were incomplete or did not have a signature. There were one hundred and thirteen disclosures, and according to our policy, they must go to the review committee, which our policy is actually the internal auditor's office. And this part of the process has not been complete. I don't think we have records of that this has actually been completed. The, the review and resolution of disclosures in recent years. So we're recommending that we actually automate the process from the, the three phases, from awareness to review, so that we're reducing the errors and we're streamlining the tracking and reporting of disclosures. And many colleges and universities have upgraded their systems using an off-the-shelf software such as Navex, and we had the opportunity to see a demo. We had the IT, people from IT, the internal auditor and myself, which handles all three phases. And I'm not going to go through all the features, but, you know, people can, people will not be able to submit unless it's completed and there's a signature. You actually can collaborate, the reviewers can actually collaborate through the software, so you don't even have to have a meeting. You can actually set it up so it goes to the person's email box and you can review and sign off. And it can automatically send alert to individuals who have not completed the form, similar to the way that we're doing our training modules. And as a side note, there's also a separate policy development and coordination module that we probably need that can serve as a repository for all the policies that we do at the university, and it can map the policies and the paragraphs to specific compliance standards to actually assist us with certifications and audits. So I understand that there are financial implications, and I'm not trying to sell the software to the, to the Board of Directors today. I'm just asking that we actually explore the option as best practice, and perhaps we, it's my hope that we could at least consider it as an option and as a first step, allow the proposed Risk Management Council to view a demonstration of the system and its capabilities along with other possible options and then make a recommendation. And lastly, I'm going to put in a pitch for risk management. I contend that all employees at TSU bear some responsibility for monitoring our risk and our internal controls. And I think all of us need to start thinking strategically and working collaboratively, especially when it comes to our backend systems. And so it's my hope that we can begin building even more risk-conscious community that supports and creates an effective process to identify, measure, and control risk. And I probably told you more than I should have, but that concludes my report, Dr. Forbes and Dr. Coles.
Thank you. Dr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Doug Allen for those that are on the phone. Mrs. Howell and I had an opportunity to really discuss this software. This is another means for us to be able to automate more of our processes and, and take some of that manual process out. So I am in support of being able to move forward with this recommendation.
Dr. Johnson.
I didn't mean to open a can of worms here, but, but thank you. Yeah, I did, actually. So thank you. Automating these things that we have perpetual problems, so we can solve these easy, so thank you.
Attorney Johnson.
I think the automation is great. I think it's a great idea, obviously, but I also think that we need to think about, this is so important for our findings, for our risk management, for everything. There needs to be some punitive repercussions for people not doing it in a timely fashion. Whether, you know, you get noticed, you need to do it ninety days, then sixty days, then thirty days. And if you don't do it, I bet you, you have a hundred percent participation if you don't get your paycheck. If, if I may.
Attorney Johnson, that's when I opened up, that's, I agree with you, that's what I said. What are we going to do to hold?
Yeah, like, I mean. I don't know what's allowed.
Okay. Dr. Allen.
If I may, there have been times we've talked about holding people's paychecks for different reasons, right? Example, not getting your leave reported, okay? By law, we can't hold somebody's paycheck, but we can lock them out of the system that would not allow them to get back in until they complete it. Automation is only as good as the people that are completing the process, okay? This will help manage the process, but people still need to be held accountable to do the process.
One of the things that we did also along the lines during COVID, remember, there were things, provisions people had to comply with, and they could not start their computer without going through certain things. So there's the ability to go that route that really limits your ability to get onto your computer until you go to and you complete some of these forms.
Because though it's our responsibility, it, it's, it's the person's responsibility to complete it, it's our responsibility to ensure that they're completed. So if, if we're not putting the, the safeguards in place to ensure that, either through technology, we got all this AI, I don't even know how it works, but can we, you know, I don't know, like you said, lock their computer out? Yeah, can we, can we do something? So, because I think that a lot of times people just think it's another junk form, right? They don't understand the importance of it and the risk that it poses for these audits and some of the things we're going through with the legislature now. These findings are critical because it shows the institutional controls. So we've got to do something to be more on top of that.
Trustee Pinnock. Just one minute, trustee Lewis, Chair Pinnock was next. Just one minute, please, sir.
I just wanted to say that I'm so happy that we have a risk manager that's doing exactly what the risk manager should be doing and that's working globally across all functions to make sure that things are, are decently in order, however difficult that might be.
Trustee Lewis.
But, gentlemen, it seems to me that there ought to be a policy set by this board as it relates to this matter. Well, I don't care, we can hold the auditors or the vice president of finance without having some type of policy from this board of trustees as it relates to the items or the people not, that have not completed this.
Yes, trustee Lewis, I understand what you're saying. I think, and, and, and I stand, please correct me if I'm in error, well, the policy is warned that it must be completed. I think that in hearing what everyone is saying, you, trustee Lewis, and trustee Johnson, is that I think from this board level, what we would have to say, number one, is that I don't think we get into deciding the software. I think that's an administration issue because they know the funding that we have. I think this board has to set the policy that, that we will not accept these types of return ratings anymore. They have to be done, and this board will have to say that there has to be a repercussion, as attorney Johnson said, for not doing what you need to do. Now, from a legal standpoint, you know, I don't know all what you can do. If we can lock them out of the system, we need to do that. But it is the responsibility of this board to make sure that we are instructing that the individuals must complete the forms. If they don't, there has to be a repercussion because just as attorney Johnson said, things like this blow up into major items on an audit report. So Secretary Penleton, you can tell me from a legal standpoint what we need to say right now to put in effect what we all just said.
No, I mean, we've had that discussion, so I think that they're taking your direction from the comments that have been made about what needs to occur. We, you know, there, there is already a board policy that governs conflicts of interest. I think this is more about putting the measures in place, and I think there needs to be a report back to the board about the things that have now been put in place, including locking folks out of their computer and things like of that nature to help comply. And to keep in mind, the computers are, computers are owned by the university, so we have the right to determine the use of your.
Well, so I'm going to ask that at the next board meeting, you would bring us back steps on exactly what we're going to do. One, to approve the rate, two, to hold the responsible, the individuals responsible with punitive damages if they do not complete what needs to be done. I'll also make a note that just as the employees have to complete conflict of interest questionnaires, we do too as a Board of Trustees. And, and so it's not just putting it on employees. This is our responsibility also. I am glad to say that we have done a good job this year of turning in our conflict of interest statements from the Board of Trustees. So, Dr. Forbes Williams, I want to make sure that we are clear as to what we are expecting to be returned to us. I'm sorry, trustee Pinnock, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to what the risk manager said, and what she said was, we had a flawed process in her opinion, and that here's a fix to the flawed process. So I, I think we need to give her an opportunity to fix it.
Well, I, I agree with you, sir. And that's what, if, and maybe I wasn't clear. I don't think the Board of Trustees is the one to determine we use A, B, or C software. We don't do that. I think what we, what we're saying is fix it, okay? So if it takes a new software to do that, that's within administration. We're holding the administration responsible for that, so that would be within that realm. What we're saying is when you come back to us, we would like to know what is being done, what has been done, not is what has been done to correct it and what steps will be taken to hold individuals responsible for not complying. Do we, did I miss something, trustee Pinnock? If I did, please state. Okay, go on with your comment.
Um, Richard Lewis again.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate what you said, Chair Coles, but I would like to just adjust your thought process. We need to hear at our next board meeting not only what is being done, but what has already been done. There should be no further delay.
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct. I agree with you, sir, and if I did not state that clearly, I apologize, but that's what I, 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 that's what I was trying to say. Thank you so much for assisting me with that. As trustee Lewis said, we do want to know what has been done to fix it. Is that correct, trustee Lewis?
It is definitely correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have also solicited Dr. Milton Skills to assist with this also, for technical help.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Milton, okay.
Okay. Next internal audit, TSU Department of HR, follow-up, starts on page forty-two. The scope, July first, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We had three findings. Finding one, university management did not ensure that the employee and/or the university representative completed all of the required sections of the I-nine form within the top, within the required timeframe. Prior period, out of thirty, we had five that was incomplete, seventeen percent. It is getting better. The current period, we have three out of thirty, so we're at ten percent at this point. But ten percent was still not completed in the required timeframe.
Am I correct that this is a homeland security issue also?
Yes. Management comments, the high supervisor says she's not always notified when new employees start. She says she has talked and spoken with each of the hiring departments, however, this continues to be a problem.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
The HR supervisor, these are the management comments. She says she's not always informed timely when a new or potential hire has started in the department.
Just for my benefit and everybody else may know, explain to me how you hire someone and HR doesn't know it.
That is a very good question in terms from internal audit standpoint, maybe, Dr. Allen, since this falls under his department, can further explain that?
Yes.
Dr. Allen, could you help me on that?
Sure, sure. That is not proper practice that you have someone start. It's a safety concern, it's a security concern. We have stressed multiple times to departments that they need to make sure that a person is properly vetted, that the background check has been completed. This is not an HR issue, it is a university issue, right? But it's, HR should receive that information in advance, not after the fact. Each, each potential employee should have an employment contract on file, okay? And the background submitted at a minimum before they start. So this is continued communication between the departments and HR.
I have a question. It's kind of a different, different kind of question.
Just one minute, trustee Martin, trustee Pinnock is speaking right now.
So, so HR reports to business and finance, right?
That is correct.
Just hypothetically, why wouldn't it report to operations or something like that? HR reports to business and finance, why wouldn't it say report to operations?
Well, I've had this discussion, I even had it with General Lee. I mean.
General Lee, have mercy.
General Lee.
Turn my mic off.
We, we, we don't think it's broken. There are some things that need to be modified with it, we don't think it's broken, so I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable moving it at the time. And so I looked at other models, and it's, it's with business finance, so I didn't think it was, it was, we should move it from where it is to somewhere else now. And that's the reason.
If I may, again, this is not an HR issue. It's, it's important to understand that we need departments, if they are looking to hire someone, that they reach out to HR. If you offer a person a job without having that employment contract on file or having their background check completed, that is nothing HR can do about that. That goes back to the communication between departments. Hey, Doug Allen is looking to hire a new accountant, right? Well, that process has to go through first. I would say through HR. We post the position, okay? In some cases, these positions may not even be posted, and they're, and folks are going out hiring individuals. So I want to be clear of where the problem begins. It is a university problem, but it's not, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's not a communic-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's not a communication problem. What we're saying is you got to have safeguards in place where it can't happen.
Listen.
It's and so and so you have to have fail safes. So if you're relying on a department communicating, that's just a person. Person can make mistakes. They can forget. But if we put fail safes in place with technology where basically this person cannot be hired, or they cannot be given access to the TSU system until you have their contract uploaded, you have their, you know, all the things uploaded. I don't know how to do that, but this can't be that hard, though.
It it's not hard, but let me say this. Folks that are hired outside of the process, and this relates to individuals following the policy, okay? Policy states that you should go through HR, all right? Now, they do not oftentimes have access to banner and things of that nature without having the forms on file. And and our CIO can attest to that. So it's, they're here and their bodies are here, but they can't function within the system.
Yeah, but we keep talking about policies, right? Policies exist, just like laws exist.
That's right.
But it's our job to ensure that there are institutional controls there where people don't have a choice to follow the policy or not, right? That that, I mean, of course, you might not be able to a hundred percent get that done. And you want to say to people, hey, follow this policy. But it's our job to ensure that there's no way not to follow the policy because our system is designed where if you don't follow the policy, it won't let you get to the next step.
Well, just just one minute before you answer that. I'm 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 sorry, before you answer that. Let me, let me, uh, Trustee Martin had a comment.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And then.
Yes, I I'd just like to to say it, I disagree. It is an HR issue because nothing, no one should be able to get a check or anything without HR approving it. So so just like, uh, Trustee Johnson is saying, if you have policies and procedures in place, I understand that you're saying that people are not following it. But if a person can't get a computer, if they cannot get a paycheck, if it's certain things in place that they cannot receive until HR approves it, and that's the way it should be. HR needs to be the ones that say this, this, this has been done, and we are approved. The bottom line, it's going to come back to HR when these people are working for Tennessee State University and receiving a check. So shame on us for saying that people are not following policies. There needs to be things in place where people cannot receive a check, cannot receive a computer, anything to begin working for Tennessee State University unless someone from HR pushes a button and says everything has been done and they are approved.
Uh, may I take the chair's prerogative at this point in time? I I want to, I, this is a critical issue, and this is what I would like to say that I would like to see done for the next board meeting. I would like for you all to bring back, I'll say, plan as to how, again, we fix this. How do we put the safeguards in place? What checks and balances we're going to put in place? We could sit here for the next thirty minutes and discuss whether it's this, that, or the other. We know, number one, there's a problem. What I'm asking to do is for the next board meeting, bring back what, as I'm going to use Trustee Lewis's words, what has been done and what will continue to be done, okay?
If I may state on the record, there are mitigating controls in place.
Okay, well, Dr. Allen, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, if there are, bring that back in the report. I understand what you're saying. The next board meeting, please bring back in the report what has been done and what will continue to be done. And also in that report, give us any information. If it was already in place, it was in place, and we're going to continue to do it, okay? Can we, if it's, is everyone okay with that? Thank you. All right, um, I forgot where I was now.
Next finding.
You, okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Forbes Williams, okay?
Finding two, university management did not ensure that all employee performance evaluations for nonfaculty personnel were submitted to the TSU Department of HR. Out of eighteen employees, well, out of thirty employees, eighteen, sixty percent during the current period was not submitted or not completed. In the prior period, we had fifteen out of thirty, fifty percent. So it went from fifty percent to sixty percent not being completed.
Wait, what, repeat that. I'm sorry, um, performance evaluations?
This is for performance evaluation for nonfaculty personnel.
Okay, let me just say before you go further, we do have the expertise of Trustee Martin, who is, uh, has expertise in the in the area. So I'll, I'm I'm volatile in you, Trustee Martin. I'm sure that if you all need to reach out to her, she would be more than glad to assist in in a manner that that she can.
I will, Trustee, uh, Chair Cole, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Finding three, pre-employment screening. Details of this finding, the confidential, we'll be discussing executive session.
Okay.
This concludes this agenda item.
All right. Is, do you have another report?
Yes.
Okay, just a minute. The next, is that review of outstanding items is your next one? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a review of outstanding audit issues. The materials for this agenda are included in your board materials for the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four board meeting. I'm asking President Glover and Dr. Forbes Williams to provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational discussion item, so no vote is required. Dr. Glover or Dr. Forbes Williams?
Okay, initially submitted on page forty-seven. However, permission has been granted to move this agenda item to the executive session.
Okay.
This completes this agenda item.
We're moving all of these items to the executive session? Okay. All right. Um, thank you for providing that information. Um, is there any additional business? Seeing none?
Chair Cole.
Yes, sir.
Chair Cole.
Sir.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
The auditors from the state of Tennessee and other people who audit us, do they get a chance to read these reports by our internal auditor?
Yes, sir. If they request them, then yes, they have the right to read them. Yes, sir, that's correct. Am I, yeah, that's correct, sir.
What if they don't request them?
I do they, uh, I mean, what do you mean? If 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 they request them, we have to provide them, uh, if they're finished. Is that your question, sir?
No, that's not my question.
I'm sorry.
Just wondering whether or not the data audits are reading the internal audit reports. How they can explain about what they're reading.
Uh, Dr. Allen, I'm going to ask you to address this, sir.
Uh, yes, as part of their audit, they do request the, uh, reports provided by the internal auditor.
Okay, and and so he said, yes, that they do, uh, Dr. Allen. I mean, Dr. Lewis.
I appreciate you giving me the answer.
Okay. At this point in time, uh, if there's any additional business, seeing none, uh, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting to enter into the executive session for discussion of items deemed confidential under state law?
So moved.
Okay, um, any discuss, second, please. Okay. Second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to adjourn the meeting to enter into the executive session for discussion of items deemed confidential under state law. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick.
All right. Okay, the motion is approved. We are adjourned to move into executive session. Uh, we would ask everyone other than the board of trustees to please, uh, leave the room momentarily. Thank you. Going to ask, uh, Dr. Allen, all right, we're moving back into the public session of the Audit Committee meeting. Want to make a finding for the record. We, the Board of Trustees of Tennessee State University, received a draft copy of findings for the FY twenty-two audit on three fourteen of twenty-four. A copy was emailed to me as chair on three thirteen twenty-four, and I have not had an opportunity to to review the information. The board will not take action until I, as the chair, and TSU administration has an opportunity to review the findings and the full six thirty twenty-two report along with a response from management. If necessary, I, as chair, will instruct for a call meeting to be had to review the findings and report prior to the next scheduled board of trustees meeting. Secretary Pendleton.
You're just reading a rec, finding it to the record, or there's no approval or anything?
So at this point in time, we take a motion to adjourn the, uh, Audit Committee?
Yes.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Secretary Pendleton, call the roll, please.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pennick. All right, two ayes.
Okay, the motion is, the motion is approved. At this point in time, we're moving into the Finance.
Finance and Budget Committee, yes.
Good morning. Uh, the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Finance and Budget Committee is now called to order. Before we get started, we need to make certain findings on the record regarding the necessity for conducting this meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum being present. In accordance with Tennessee Code annotated section eight forty-four one oh eight B two, as chair, as. Vice chair. Oh, as vice chair, um, of the Finance and Budget Committee, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees Finance and Budget Committee to conduct this March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting without the physical presence of a quorum. The Finance and Budget Committee is scheduled to take up important committee matters which require timely by the committee, including but not limited to approval of the FY two thousand twenty-five compensation plan. That the committee will also receive important reports on construction and facilities updates and the master plan. Finance and budget and the Consumer Relations Strategic Plan, enrollment merit scholarships, the Personnel Action Plan, and Information Technology Replacement Plan. Participating by electronic means is necessitated by the members' in-person absence due to unavoidable travel issues. Accordingly, I move that the committee find that participation by quorum of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Is there a second? Second. The question is on the motion to find that participation by quorum of the committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
The motion carries. We will proceed with the meeting with the quorum present. At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
We have three ayes and a quorum.
Thank you. Committee members, if you cannot hear or speak to other committee members or board members, please state so now. For each committee member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present from a location from which you are participating. All right, um, the next agenda item is the approval of the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-three Finance and, uh, Budget Committee meeting minutes. The minutes of the Finance and Budget Committee November sixteen, two thousand twenty-three meeting are included for your review in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. I move that the Finance and Budget Committee to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-three Finance and Budget Committee meeting minutes as contained in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? There being none, the question is on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the November sixteen, two thousand twenty-three Finance and Budget Committee meeting minutes as contained in the board materials for March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Um, the next agenda item is a report and update on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Institutional Revised Budget. The materials related to this agenda item are included for your review in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. President Glover or designee will provide information pertaining to this budget item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson. Going to ask, uh, Dr. Allen, if you would.
Yes, good afternoon, and thank you. I will turn your attention to page sixty-four of your board materials. In front of you, you will see the summary of revenues, expenditures, and transfers, which is our budget to actual report as of for the period ending February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. The first column is our budget column. The second column is our fiscal year to date, and this is year to date as of February twenty-ninth, okay? Uh, just want to point out a few items on here, uh, that I think are of interest. Our tuition and fees budgeted at ninety-nine point two million dollars is currently, uh, our fiscal year to date is eighty-eight point six million. We're about ten point five million, uh, under budget, but please keep in mind, we still have to book our summer revenues, okay? So that'll put us really close in line, uh, with what we had budgeted, uh, once that's booked. Our state appropriations, uh, again, those come in in regular intervals. Uh, those are right on track. We'll receive the fifty-two point five as of the twenty-ninth of February. It's been thirty-one point one million. The federal grants and contracts, you'll see we budgeted three point five million. However, we've only recorded thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. What that is, is our indirect cost. So on our grants, we receive indirect cost revenue. And and that is, again, for our overhead as it relates to grants. We normally capture that in, uh, in May, early June, excuse me. So that's why you do not see, uh, a large significant portion of that being, uh, recognized on this budget to actual report. That takes our total, uh, educational and general, uh, revenues. One point, uh, one hundred and sixty-two point five million is the budget, and one hundred and twenty-six point two million, uh, has been, uh, collected. And again, thirty-six point two million of that, we do expect to to collect between now and June thirtieth. Auxiliary revenues, I'm sorry, auxiliary, yes, auxiliary revenues are right on pace. We're actually just a little bit over, uh, what we had budgeted, uh, for that, which is, which is good. Now, I'm going to go down to the expenditures. We budgeted a hundred and seventy-two point three million for education on general and thirty-six point eight million for auxiliaries, uh, bringing the total to two hundred and nine point two million. Just a few things that I want to point out here, uh, one being the scholarships and fellowships, okay? You all see that there was a budget of nineteen point two million versus thirty-seven million that we have booked, all right? So let me walk through that. The board approved, uh, the total reven, uh, sorry, total scholarships of twenty-two point five million dollars. A portion of that, of the, of the twenty-two point five is sitting in student services as it relates to housing scholarships, okay? What you will then see is that last year, we had a lot of, we we had several issues, uh, with students saying that they didn't get their scholarships, et cetera, okay? Uh, that was going up until the spring semester. Uh, what we did is is revamp that process. So we actually started awarding scholarships on July the first of this fiscal year, okay? So once you award it, it's on their student's account. We see it on the back end, but. We see it on the back end, but the students don't see the full amount because you have to get through that semester, right? So it's the difference between seeing it on the student account, I'm sorry, on the financial aid side versus seeing it on the student's side, okay? So the number is much larger because we booked the spring revenues based on the students that had scholarships in the fall, right? Now, that number is coming down because some of those students unfortunately didn't meet the standards to keep their scholarships, or they left, whatever. But we didn't want to go through what we did last year and make sure the students had their scholarships on their accounts so that they could better manage their financial situations with their parents and others, all right? Another portion that you don't see is that we do have outside assistance such as the foundation and others that support our students and scholarship needs as well. Well, that's not, we have to book the expense on our books because it is a scholarship expense. However, there are transfers from the foundation to support scholarship needs as well, okay? So you will see that number come down. One other thing I wanted to note, for two thousand twenty two, if you go to the very last column. For two thousand twenty three prior year to date, I just looked at a year-to-year comparison, what happened February of last year versus February of this year, all right? And the scholarship number was at forty four point two million. It's actually come down. I did bring to the board's attention, yes, there was a lot of scholarships awarded. We did have an influx of students that helped offset the cost of those revenues, okay? But we've intentionally brought those down to level them out over time. So a full scholarship is a commitment for four years if a student meets those requirements, and we hope that they do. Mr. Evans and his team, you know, we talked through the budget, the board approved ten and a half million, five million of that was for new scholarships, the other portion of that was for athletics and band, all right? There has, the five million that was for new scholarships under Jason Evans's shop, they have not overawarded. So I didn't want anyone to think by looking at this number, oh my God, we've repeated the same process, because we have not, okay? So I just wanted a point of clarity there. What you see is what's actually in the system, okay? I'd rather present what is in the system, which is our record, enters our system of record, and then back out those scholarships for students that no longer qualify to receive those scholarships, okay? For our total educational and general, you'll see that we're floating right along where we were last year, it's one hundred and thirty two point six million versus one thirty two point seven, okay? As far as the E and G expenditures. Now, auxiliaries, we're still on target there. We are down, well, I'm sorry, no, we're actually on point as it relates to scholars for the auxiliary revenues, that being bookstore, housing, et cetera, all right? So we were at thirty two point seven million last year, we're floating around twenty five point one million now. But again, we did have a decrease in the student body, which ultimately, the revenues tied to, and I'll use example for dining services, I mean, that's a one-to-one relationship. That number, if we have more students, you're going to have more revenues in housing and dining services. So as of February twenty ninth, we're at thirteen point two million. Keep in mind, that's into the good, we still have to get through the rest of the fiscal year, so we're right on track where we need to be from that standpoint. So are there any questions as it relates to the budget to actual?
No, but I appreciate the explanation of the numbers, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Dr. Allen, I just have a question. Would there be anything that you would identify as a, you explained why some numbers aren't where they need to be yet because we're waiting on additional revenue or some accruals that have happened? But is there anything from this budget to actual that you think we need to be made aware of or talk about that will impact us negatively moving forward?
I don't think so. We just have to make sure we control our spending and stay within the budget. Do that, we'll be fine. That's what I honestly will bring to you. Again, if I thought there was something out there, I would definitely, definitely notify the board.
All right, thank you for that report. Are there any questions or discussion related to that?
Yes, just one. Probably my lack of understanding. So under the scholarships, is that thirty seven versus the nineteen that was budgeted? Is that the sort of the equivalent of a carryover in a way?
So, yes and no, okay? So let me explain. The total budget was twenty two and a half million, right? We had recurring scholarships. We made sure that the students that had recurring scholarships, that we went ahead and awarded them and put them on their account. So that's where you see, if every single student had their scholarships renewed, then yes, that number will be hovering around that thirty seven million. But because, you know, unfortunately, like I said, some students lost their scholarships, and so that number will come down. But as again, as I stated, I wanted to show what the actual picture looked like as a. All right, thank you. Thank you. If there are no other questions.
I think we can move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is an update on the construction and facilities and a master plan update. For information regarding this Finance and Budget Committee agenda item is included in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty four Board Meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information, pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational discussion item only, so no vote is required.
Thank you. Dr. Allen and Mr. Rafford, Will Rafford.
I'll ask Mr. Rafford to please come to the podium. Sir Rafford, we can limit that to about five minutes.
Sure. Good afternoon, Will Rafford, Assistant Vice President, Planning, Design, Construction, Campus Operations. You will find in your packet an overview of all active projects and what's on campus. I'll point your attention to the first page, which captures the Gateway Arch. This is a project designed to be the welcoming center of the campus, so as you pull into the campus, you will find this project. I've shown the images and graphics in your presentation, but I've also outlined, this is a requires Department, Nashville Department of Transportation approval. Let me pause. Are you finding that in your packet?
Oh, I'm good. Yes, I'm good, thank you.
So this requires Nashville Department of Transit approval to construct across an active highway. We have moved forward with that, it's presently in the legal department for final review. We have already prepared a procurement to procure this product through a localized solicitation so that this can happen on a pretty quick timeframe. Ideally, this will be dubbed the Glenda Glover Gateway Project. Second to that, you'll see the capital disclosure for the Ed Temple Track Replacement. We have undergone a project with the Athletics Department to resurface the track. That work took place over the past three weeks, so we are in the finishing steps of that project that will position Tennessee State University to receive some national attention and host national events that can help raise money for the university. That project was just shy of a million dollars, and that investment is positioned for the university to achieve a high return on that initial investment. There were no quarterly disclosure projects. The next is the capital projects. These are projects that are funded and submitted to the State Building Commission, and they are funded through money that comes to us. We solicit in July one year, it's approved or rejected the next year, and then it's funded the final year. So two years ago, we were approving the new engineering building. This has been on the board for a while, but we have presently settled on a project that will have two phases. It'll start with a sixty million dollar project that's about fifty seven thousand square feet that fully replaces what we have now as an engineering building. It's designed to be a high recruitment tool for both professors as well as new students and then industry partners that will help establish a greater level of research at Tennessee State University for the future. In your packet, you'll see two graphics showing both Phase One and Phase Two. Second to that is a twenty nine point seven million dollar project for the Davis Humanities Building. This is our flagship building on campus, which bears an emblem that is known for Tennessee State University, the Coppola. That building will receive a complete extensive renovation, correcting water intrusion, heating and cooling systems in that building throughout, and one hundred percent of finishes replaced, including those in the theater that were partially replaced in the past year. In addition to that Davis Humanities renovation is the Boswell Study. There's an existing project that thought we would renovate Boswell's chemistry labs. It became clear to us that investing that much money in an existing structure with thermal envelope issues was not prudent, so we went back to the State Building Commission and recommended that we do a comprehensive study of the facility and then take action based on that. So at present, our plan, which is captured in the master plan, is to look at building a new lab, sciences common, that will connect all lab work on campus, which will prevent TSU from being in this position in the future, which is the lab renovation space costs more than you would actually want to invest in a failing building. So when we build a new lab, sciences common, it means we will always have a central place for biology labs, engineering labs, physics, chemistry labs, and it's contained in one structure. That is identified to go in the courtyard between Boswell Clay right down from Hale Hall. The future of Boswell is in question and will be determined as that study is completed, but it, as a part of our plan to create the STEM quadrant, will be an interesting site for future academic research buildings. Next is the Electrical Improvement Project. We briefed this before, this is at present a twenty eight million dollar project that restructures the way electrical power is distributed to the university. If you remember in twenty one, when power went out, it was because we only had one public connection point. The result of this project is provide two connection points so that we can feed the entire campus from both the north and the south. That project is moving along well as relates to budget, but it is challenged by schedule because we've hit a enormous amount of rock, which is predictable in this area, so the first loop did not predict it in cost, the second loop will predict it in cost. So we will, we do not anticipate cost overruns, but there is a schedule impact at present. This at present is down Alameda between the Strange Music Building and Watson Hall, so you see that work actively going on now. But next is, in the capital projects is agriculture. There are two projects in agriculture right now, one being the Food and Animal Science Project and the other being Environmental Science Project. Both of those projects are completing design, but they are anticipated to exceed the available design, the available construction budget, so we anticipate those projects requiring more funding as we get toward the end, or a hard decision being made about the overall scope and scale of that work. And I'll wrap it up with the ongoing localized projects. Campus security, we are rekeying facilities across the campus to ensure security. Policies are being put in place about how employees, once they're terminated, keys are collected and redistributed, but at present, to get ahead of that, we've taken an active project to rekey and issue building keys, limiting master keys, only issuing submasters. Lab improvements across the board, we have an active project at Hornet Hall, which increases our research capacity there. Student housing has always been a big issue. You'll notice that we do not have an active housing project now, but we are studying the P three model and what's possible here, as well as looking forward to the resubmission of the thousand bedroom dorm property, once the interest rates allow us to get in line with what our students historically have been able to afford. The Love Learning Resource Building went through a renovation project that was completed in last quarter. It ensured that the waterproofing and the roof system was replaced, which minimized damage in the historical spaces of that building. The tornado recovery, I'm happy to report, we talked extensively about that last time. We have gone back from twenty nineteen to now, and some of the claims that were being protracted or held open, we have successfully closed them with TSU receiving just short of two point eight million dollars of closing funds. That is a positive for the university because, as we discussed last time, the question was, how do you build if the time value of money has reduced the impact of your dollars? We were able to go back with the FEMA, TEMA localized insurance provider and work to prove some of the things that were missed, which increases the number of funds available to TSU to replace projects like the Boiler House, which is where our animal research of chickens takes place, which is right outside the apartment site. Lastly, I'll brief that our master plan has not been, it has been received. We do have the final version of the master plan, but in the process, it was delayed, and there are some matters that are contract violation issues that we are working with TBR to help resolve with the master planner, so they have completed and given us a document, but our staff has had to do quite a bit of work to actualize that document in a way that's useful to Tennessee State University. In short, it means the pricing that came with that document was not informed by local Nashville pricing, and it put TSU in a position to have to go back and reprice a hundred percent of the work that was in that document, which was an effort that we do not enjoy paying for services and not getting them, but we have the support of TBR to go back and get this thing corrected, and we'll provide an update on that at the next board meeting. That concludes the items I'd like to present. Are there any questions?
Yeah, if I can jump back to your disclosures pages. Timeframe for Phase One Engineering Building?
So at present, this is slated for nineteen month design period. We are in month, I call it month two of that, so we see that coming online at late twenty six, early twenty seven.
Then Phase Two for Davis?
Davis Humanities is just, is just one phase of Davis.
Okay.
And so that project is ongoing. We've just received a schematic design documents for that project. It has similar fifteen month time schedule, so that project will move faster than the engineering project.
Okay, and then you mentioned the student housing, thousand beds is on hold pending interest rates coming down or whatever, right?
Yes, we, we, we put the Tennessee State School Bond Authority package together, I'm sorry, yeah, school bond package together, and the pricing came out to roughly nine thousand dollars per semester per student. Our students are used to paying about five, a little short of five thousand, so we have some, gives us a target of where the interest rate falls to and when we would be able to submit that project. But at the present rates, it would not be successful for our student finances.
And I understand it is a balance of our calculus of affordability, but meeting our needs, right?
That is correct.
Urgencies, and so, yeah.
That is correct. At present, we have three thousand six hundred and sixty six rooms on campus. Our student population at the rate of forty seven percent says we need three thousand seven hundred and sixty rooms, so we are within three to five percent of where we like to be. At present, all students are accommodated on campus, and there are no students in the hotels, and so that is something that we, we see being the present solution, and we look forward to moving the thousand bed project back to the top of the board as rates fall back within range, but we are also examining some of the P three options, which benefit us by having speed to market, and some of those projects that we've sat in on from the Housing Committee and have supported the Housing Committee taking actions, steps with. Those could be our answer on a faster timeline than a nineteen month design schedule and twenty four month construction schedule. So it's the top of the list, but we have multiple options to solve the problem.
And I just want to, just, I'll just add my little two cents here. I'm certainly an advocate for more and more and more housing for us. Ideally, in my dream situation is seven thousand beds. I know that may be a pretty big dream, but the more beds we have, the greater the likelihood of being, us being able to increase our student body count. That's the key, so.
Thank you.
So I have a question. It's continuing on the housing piece. I know we're repricing elements of the master plan, but do you have a sense of what the enrollment projections are going out into the future? Okay, I understand, but it's, but the housing plan.
The housing plan historically has met forty two to forty seven percent of our enrollment.
Okay.
And so we do currently have a model that we track, fall and spring, to receive those numbers and update our model based on those numbers.
Okay, but are there, I mean, I suppose I could wait till General Evans, but I was just wondering if you had a number or there were enrollment numbers within the master plan, because it's based on space utilization enrollment and other stuff, right?
You are correct, there is a number there. I would not report that number as it's just. I would not report that number as it's just something we receive, put into a model, and then use that to scale the option.
All right. My second question is, could you give me a, give us sort of a general idea of what the STEM quadrant, STEM quadrant is, is going to contain?
Oh yes, the STEM quadrant. So at present, the R two, R one designation would be to build in the place of the existing engineering building when it is removed, the existing Boswell and Davis should it be removed, a new research, academic research commons, designing a space for the student population that exists to spend 12 to 18 hours a day on campus in labs. And that being proximate to our STEM functions of engineering, physics, biology, mathematics. So it's building that quadrant to keep those functions close and local and to have housing options that are close and local, but not ideally designated. But what it means for TSU in the future is the west entrance to campus is where the STEM quadrant lives. And what you see is Holland Hall, which was, which is business, and Crouch Hall, which is historically the history and some of the other components. It's possible they may find another place to live as that programming continues to, to grow in that quadrant or campus.
Is there, final question, is there, is it, is there a plan for things like clean rooms or a clean room or some of the things that would put us, position us for some real significant opportunities in the future?
Very good question. So at, at present, we have studied that with the new Phase One of the engineering building. We determined the cost of clean room technology is three times the cost of expensive labs. So we're at $731 a square foot. To put in clean room technology would be well above $2,100 a square foot, which means it would shrink what we can provide for the incoming freshmen and industry partnerships. It's for that reason that we pushed it to the second phase of the project. We are looking at SKIFs, which is to secure facilities and putting those in the basement level and allowing our students to compete for high-security functions, but clean room is on the table. On Monday, we will be at Oak Ridge National Labs studying and working with some of the scientists there on projects that they have going on. And then we will visit UT Knox to visit their clean room and some other, you can't actually go inside, but to visit and get a sense of some of the programming. And then lastly, on Tuesday, we'll be at Tennessee Tech to visit the new structure that they've recently built and the lab sciences common they recently built. So it is on the table, it's high on the board. The existing consultant that we have has studied it from a pricing model. It just doesn't fit in the Phase One of the engineering building.
Thank you.
If I add, before I ask my question, I want to say first, thank you for what you've been doing. I, I've seen you on campus quite a few times and I've, I've seen you just going around and working hard. So I would appreciate you just from what I've seen on paper and in person. My question is, do you, do you need any more additional resources like staffing? I see all these, these projects here. Do you feel as if you are able to get these things done?
Well, I, I continue to enjoy the support of both President Glover, Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Allen. Our vision is a team of approximately 26 professionals, licensed architects, licensed engineers, licensed education facilities planner. I call the name of Fabian Joe-Lavette this semester. He did the study, did the work to become a certified education facilities planner. So professional development dollars are really important and we need more of those. We are being creative with funding as it relates to that, to get people to this, this year's APA conference, which is a national standard for campus and facilities management resources. It's local to Nashville, so I want to take as many people as we can to minimize travel costs because it's in our backyard. The, the hiring piece is, is challenging because you want to attract the talent, but then you need to be able to close the talent in a timely fashion. So it's less about having approval, but more about having the right process to make that happen in a timely way that we don't lose good people. Well, I appreciate that question and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. If I could also jump in and I'll, I'll put my-
Question for Mr. Radford.
Go ahead, Obie.
Yes, just wanted to ask Mr. Radford, first of all, congratulations on all the hard work you're doing. But are you, are you aware that we're in a, we have an affiliation agreement with a private developer that is developing student housing on the House of God property? Are you aware of it?
I'm aware of that, and we, in, in October of this year, met with that partner and reviewed their presentation and are aware what their numbers are. I'm aware that they've met and presented to the city and the community and that there were some requests from the city and the community to retool what they have presented. I'm not aware of what they have done in response to that community meeting, but we stand positioned to partner with them as that development comes online. But I understand the university has not determined to sign a pre-lease agreement with them. So those are, that's the extent to which I'm aware of that project.
Yeah, well, I think it's very important that we get you connected with the developer immediately. The National Building Authority has approved the issuance of $185 million worth of bonds to finance 750 student facility on a property, a property leased to the developer by the House of God. And so there's a, there's a gap here in, in communication, but I would hope that we, we close that gap immediately. There's been four and a half million dollars spent on the project at this point. $175,000 spent for a demand study this week, and we are under an official affiliation agreement as a part of our, our trying to ameliorate our student housing shortfall. So, you know, this may not be the appropriate time to do it, but it's very, very urgent that you and the developer have a conversation. So your thinking includes what is going on there, what we, what we agreed to do.
Yeah, I want to reiterate, we are aware of the project. We have met with that partner. We attended their meeting here on campus. We attended their meeting at Mullen Island Architects downtown. We provided input on where we thought the location of student facilities should be on that project, where we thought student access for bus route pickup, which TSU would provide and include possibly to that project. So we are closely connected. We, based on my understanding of legal's position, just have not signed a lease agreement or any intent to lease. But I appreciate, A, their access and their interest in TSU's position and opinion, and that's what we've done together so far, and we look forward to working with them. I've actually briefed the state architect on that project as well, and they are in support of TSU, are taking advantage of all housing solutions in the immediate area.
Mr. Radford, thank you for that, that good report. I appreciate everything you're doing. And if there are no further questions, I think we're ready to move on to the next agenda item.
If I could just make one quick comment about the Ed Temple Track, just for people to know. It is, it is world-class surface that we're putting in, and it will be World Athletics certified, one of the only tracks in the region that is certified to uphold world records. And so that's an exciting thing for us.
Excellent, thank you all for your time.
All right, next agenda item is the Finance and Budget Report. Information regarding this Finance and Budget Committee agenda item are included in your board materials for the March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational discussion item only, so no vote will be required.
Yes, I'll be brief. I have no additional items to report at this time.
Dr. Allen, I appreciate your brevity. Thank you so much. Next agenda item is the approval of the FY 2024 Compensation Plan. The materials related to this agenda item are included for your review in the board materials for the March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. Dr. Glover, her designate, will provide information and connection with this agenda
Yes, ma'am. On page 73 of your board material, I am requesting approval for a 3% salary adjustment effective 7-1 2024 for fiscal year 2425. In addition to this, last year, it was, I think, highly praised that Dr. Glover, as always, was thinking about the faculty. She had provided a salary pool. I worked closely with Madam Provost and Dr. Bill Johnson to ensure that it was aligned properly, and, and I think it was a huge benefit. So at the end of the day, I would like to request approval for that. The cost of this, in the state's, in the governor's budget, he did approve 1.8 million in a 3% salary pool. That does not cover the total cost for the university. The total cost is about 2.6 million. And again, so we would cover that difference for that. The difference is that we have to also include benefits, okay? So it, again, it's the salary and the benefit adjustment for that.
So are you saying that the net effect to the university is about 800,000?
That is correct.
All right. So last year, what did we do?
Last year, we did 5.5% salary adjustment, yes.
So in two years, it'll be 8.5?
So actually, the year prior to that, we did 6%. Last year, 5.5, and this year, we're at, requested 3%.
So that's 14 and a half in the last three years.
And, and that is substantially greater than any other institution in this state. We recognize that it does cost more to live in this city. Several of our staff and, and faculty live outside of Nashville. So we just, given that we, we had the, the finances to do that, we wanted to take advantage and, and extend that to the faculty, staff, and other members here that are present.
Of course, I'm in support of that. Just a question, as comparison to what the same position is at other institutions, where, how do we rank?
So this year, we are right in the ballpark. I spoke to the, some of my colleagues, the other CFOs at the other LGIs, and they're right along, 2 and a half to 3 and a half percent is, is what they were gauging, but they haven't finalized.
I don't mean the increase, I mean just in general. It does, does a professor, a full professor at UT, how would we compare to that for the same?
I think Dr. Glover may want to respond to that more.
We are less than UT. We're less than the other schools. I think we are on par with one of them. We've been trying to work each year to bring us up to, to, to equal the average of the schools. We're not quite there yet, but we've certainly made some, some great strides.
All right, thank you. I think we're moving in the right direction. We have to understand that our human resources are important here, and they make, they make the school with the students. And so we need to keep people here, and we also need to attract the best people. So Dr. Milton?
Yes, I would like to add, we currently have a salary study for the faculty going on, and we'll have recommendations in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you so much. Any further discussion related to this? All right, thank you, Dr. Allen. If there are no further question or discussion, I move that the Finance and Budget Committee recommend to the full board for the approval of the fiscal year 2025 Compensation Plan as contained in the board materials for the March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The question is on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the fiscal year 2025 Compensation Plan as contained in the board materials for the March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. Secretary Pelton, please call the roll.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Corbell.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next agenda item is a report on the Consumer Relations Strategic Plan. Information regarding this agenda item is included in your board materials for the March 14, 2024 Board Meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational discussion item only, and no vote will be required.
Thank you. We're going to ask General Jason Evans. We'll see what kind of word. Oh, I see. If you would present. On the chair after, oh, you like it up. General Evans, your turn.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Cole, President Glover, and board members. Based on trustee Martin's request, last board of a strategic plan, the strategic plan for the customer relations is in here. I won't read it to you, but I'll highlight it, and we can discuss it as you, as you want to. And so what we did is we, I'm on page 77. It's not very long because it's, what we did is stay nested within the TSU strategic plan and the, those four goals there. We provided a little background, provided a little data there, and the data really pertains to student inquiries that we've collected to date. And then we made sure that based on the metrics, both the operational, long-term metrics, they were nested within the strategic plan.
Did you say page 77?
I'm on page 77, yes, ma'am. That's the, that's the start of the background of the strategic plan. And then it goes through, I think, page 80, 81. What I would like to comment on is, is how quickly and how well the customer relations office stood up. Big kudos to Jessica Powell and her staff. Please stand up, Jessica. They stood up in July, and you can see in here, we're, we're over about 600 inquiries. We've had Kristy Binkie from, who's the state HRO down here. She's comp, we've met with her, she's complimenting, complimented us on how quickly we respond and how efficiently we respond in detail to the inquiries. We are, we are fewer HRO inquiries than we were last year. And so we typically resolve inquiry within 48 hours. Some are, of course, a little more complex, but the commitment is to get to 48 hours, and the preponderance of those are all student inquiries. And we provided the breakdown by staff before to you, and you can see on page 79 and page 78 how those break down. Well, I'm sorry, page 79. And then with any plan, we, we've got some operational metrics there on page 80. But really getting to the heart of this is when will, when will this end, right? And so if you look at page 81, we did some benchmarking there. And really what we want to do is work our way out of this business and be like our peer institutions where you have a one-stop shop and that's the function it performs. And so at the end of this, I think, two to three years, maybe a couple of years, you'll see customer relations and the one-stop shop we have now, they should fold into one. And I think that the people that we have doing the customer relations, that, that should all fold together because the one-stop shop that, that's here now, I think is probably a little undermanned for, for the volume. But that's, the intent is to work our way out of the business, be modeled like the other institutions and have a one-stop shop, and you can solve student inquiries that way.
So does the one-stop shop report to you?
It does not. We work very well with Dr. Bryant and reports to Student Services. We've, we've, what we did is integrated the database or application that she uses to do student inquiries, so we don't have a disconnect out there, disconnect. She still does some student vectoring, but the inquiries come to us, and we work very well with Dr. Bryant. But I, but my recommendation would be at the end, that one-stop shop worked for somebody and, and probably would be customer relations folding down into it. I'm not sure if Student Services where it should be or where it should be under the COO, but it, it's running pretty effectively right now.
So was your office responsible for retention and admission, too? I see it's financial aid information in here, too. I'm, I'm trying to put my head around what reports to you and what reports somewhere else.
No, retention, we work with Dr. Melton's in terms of the retention. She has Dr. Anderson over there, the report you and I discussed in November, the volume of that. So, you know, we, we work-
So you're still admissions and-
That's correct. But we, we get the information in terms of retention.
But the retention is only for freshmen?
For you.
Yeah, that's what we got, enrollment management.
So retention left you and went to academic affairs? But retention is only for freshmen?
The retention coordinators that were transferred from- The retention coordinators that were transferred from enrollment management is designated only for freshmen. We have academic coaches for our sophomore, juniors, and seniors. But that unit was over in uh enrollment management and was transferred over.
Thank you.
Any?
Yes, so uh which departments have you already met with?
We uh we've, we've met with all of them. Jessica, as soon as she got on the ground, she met with all of them.
Okay.
And I've probably talked to every cabinet member and brought these issues to cabinet members. And sometimes I communicate directly with cabinet members, depending on the complexity and and priority of the inquiry.
So in regards to tracking, what are you asking them to submit to you so you can make sure you're on point in regards to your tracking?
I I think, that's a great question. I think what we do is is submit to them what we're getting in terms of inquiry, because if you see a repeat inquiry and it keeps coming back, that means you might look at a procedure or a policy. And so what we do, there's no inquiry that that is resolved unless it's resolved with the department, so that they can understand exactly what's going on. So this data and the inquiries are shared with the the cabinet members.
Okay, so how often, so as soon as you receive those, are you sharing that information with them and asking them to resolve it immediately? So that's the way this is going?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And 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 on instances, I have to personally uh go to a cabinet member so we can get the student an answer quickly, or the parent an answer quickly. So I I even take inquiries myself.
Okay, and so we're actually documenting?
Oh, we we, we have, yes, yes, ma'am. We have a database of that Jessica, it's a customer relations email, but we have a database where we record every um inquiry and and the resolution thereof.
Okay. Did you have, I didn't want to interrupt you. And so your overall goal is not to have all of these customer service issues that we've had in the past?
Uh, uh, that's, that's a gr- that's, that's correct. Uh, it's the through repetition um that the learning becomes, um that we're reflexive in responding. And and responding in 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 a in a timeframe or metric that we assign to ourselves. That's why from the onset, we assign to customer relations, you're gonna resolve this in forty-eight hours. If you can't get it resolved, then you need to come to me. So um I think it's just the repetition of this. Um, we eventually um have the departments thinking the same way um and acting the same way, because um Jessica and her crew are tenacious about having to get this done, and where's the inquiry? Um, and so to answer your question, yes, but it it takes repetition, and it takes training. Um, and I think that we will get there. That's why, from my estimation, having been in this business before in HR, I think we're probably about two years away from ta- taking our hands off, you know, taking the the training wheels off, if you, so to speak, um before it's institutionalized.
So I know in in some of the other uh committee meetings, we were uh talking about uh things getting resolved in a timely manner. So when people have questions, they come to your department, questions, and and you provide the answers?
Yes.
Okay.
We 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 provide the answer only after coordinating with the specific department. We do not provide an answer, independent of coordinating it with the the cabinet or the responsible uh unit. They get to see the answer that goes back, uh because we don't want to assume that we have the answer. But yes, I I've answered um myself well into maybe a hundred students and parents, I think, talking to them myself. I I get inquiries myself, and so we do um respond, but we make sure it's a coordinated response, and the response, the response is documented in a database.
Okay, and then my last question, I don't want to take up all the time, but does, is HR? HR is in. Feneas, you get away with that one.
I I have the personnel, but you did assign me the personal action plan, and so.
Absolutely.
That's in here.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, my my question real quick. Um, I just wanted to ask about the the one-stop shops. Do we already have a one-stop shop?
Yes, we, uh, there's a one-stop shop that's in Student Services that that um was operational when I was here. Dr. uh Bryant was here um operating it um alone. Um, and she was bas- basically was trying to orientate, orient students, and she was taking some inquiries. But after um Jessica stood up, they they met, and so Jessica is on point for all inquiries.
So the goal is, are we, so we gonna merge them?
The the goal is to be like other institutions, to have a one-stop shop and it's merged. Yes, and it's fully staffed.
I don't know that you know this answer, but I I hope you do. Um, uh, have we seen a decrease in calls and contacts to hero as a result of this?
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
So I think last year, we were over about eighteen, uh Jessica, what's the number now? About twelve or? Yeah, we were well over eighteen uh hero inquiries last year, yes. So the the hero inquiry is the state. Okay, I'm sorry, the hero is is probably the highest level within the state an inquiry gets elevated to, and it gets a lot of attention. Yes. Go ahead, Jessica.
No, you 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 cr- you cited the correct numbers.
Okay, got it, thanks.
So eighteen last year, and what's our count now, do you know?
Um, as of this academic year, it's um less than ten.
Okay, thank you.
Your department handles the inquiries from the hero office? I just want to check that it's straight.
No, that that is correct.
Okay, and what else is handled in that area?
So any any inquiry that that students, parents, alumni have. And so really, the the purpose of my department is so that we don't have hero inquiries. And really, the word has kind of gotten out about our department. And so people feel comfortable coming to us if they are trying to navigate the TSU system and are having cha- um any challenges doing so. Um, and so they contact us about a whole host of things, everything from trying to get transcripts to um, you know, changing courses, to financial aid questions, and and ver- a a whole array of various different issues.
How how many people are in that depart- in your department?
We just hired um a a administrative assistant, so right now, we have a total of three. It's myself, um Sierra Walker.
Ms. Walker, uh-huh.
Will you please stand, um who is our program manager, and Jessica Green, who is in day four uh in our uh administrative role.
So the information comes in to your area, and then you refer that information out to?
To the, to specific, what happens, the intake is, is Jessica records it out. What we, what we like to do is, we'll take the phone call, but we we typically want people to 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 use the email, because we want to document it. Because what people say on the phone is different what they will put in writing. And so the the inquiry comes, and Jessica then will assess the inquiry and immediately coordinate with the the department that's responsible to get a response or get the resolution. And then the response or resolution, they'll reply back to the parent, back to the alumni, back to the student, and we've had some from faculty and staff. Um, so that's, and we, and our goal is a forty-eight hours. Of course, some some inquiries are a little more complex, and it takes a little longer to to work, but um we've been pretty much on the mark in terms of getting back to people in a timely manner.
So that's why you mentioned that eventually, I I guess what I'm saying, we went from is, we went from eighteen to ten. So we about to put ourselves out of business in a minute. So that's why you mentioned about the com- combination.
Right, there there's two things about the numbers that that are good. One, that the hero number is going down, and two, the internal number is going up. That, because that means it's working, people are reporting.
Yeah, so more people.
It's in-house now.
Yeah, more people are coming in-house rather than going to the state, is it?
They they, more people trust that they can get a response from us than going to the state. And they can get it from us faster than they can get it from the state.
Absolutely. I I like to, and Mr. Evans is 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 spot-on. I like to say that we are a liaison between whoever the customer is, whether it be a student, a parent, what have you, and the necessary department at at TSU.
Re- real quick, going back to our conversation about communication on how we um control our narrative, is there a way we can get this out? Like the good, the good news, I'm I'm asking the board, I'm asking, is there a way we can share this with the students, with alumnis, um about what we have done? Um, that was an issue a year or two ago, when it came to customer relations and issues that students were bringing up, because this is, this is good news. And again, going back to controlling our own narrative. But we know that this is, we're doing a good job, but do the, do, do, does our family and our community know? And so I I'm just asking that.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think your your question is, can we add that to the package of ammunition?
Yes, and we can provide that.
And that's, that's important, because what it sounds like that's actually happening now, instead of people calling the university two, three, four times, and not getting a response.
Right.
And then going to the state, and then coming back to the university. Now they probably feel a lot more comfortable starting here, and maybe only having one phone call, that's what I I hope our goal is, to receive one phone call, and that phone call is answered. So the, I guess, uh, uh Chair Cole, you you look like you're getting ready to put yourself out of business. So what else are you doing in case this goes away? What, what else are you? Yeah, what, what's your plan, sir?
Look, I know, I know General Evans is gonna have an exhaustive answer to that, but in in just in consideration for time, I know we have several more agenda items, and then we have the the board meeting. So uh, uh trustee Martin, if you wouldn't mind, can we, can we defer that answer uh until the next one?
I might, I might not have a next one, can I get an email?
Absolutely.
I would appreciate it, because I I just don't want any of the calls to continue, and I'd just like to see.
Absolutely.
I'd be happy.
How we're moving forward. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, General Evans.
Yes, sir.
Um, the next agenda item is an enrollment update. Information regarding this agenda item is included in your board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational item for discussion purposes only.
Yes, ma'am, I'm on page eighty-eight. I'll allow you guys, uh everyone, to get there, because we we've provided a little more fidelity on numbers based on feedback last time. As it is um our practice, we we provide the undergraduate applicant, application pool analysis. And so um this shows you really, since eighteen, that total admitted, denied, incomplete, withdrawn, canceled, and grand total. Now, I'll go to the incomplete, because that generated discussion last time. And um what we do, that normally have is an average of thirty-five percent incomplete in terms of applications here, and we're we're right about at a forty percent incomplete. We don't see that as as a bad thing. Um, that that's a, that means you're screening um for what you should need to be screening for. But what we, what you'll see uh further down the page, I'll show you what actions were taken to try to get the students to provide the appropriate um documentation. This next one, if there are no questions, the next uh slide down, this is the new first-time freshman for Fall twenty-four. This just gives you what we're working on now in terms of applications. And so if you look to that first column there, that says, the second column, I'm sorry, that says total interest, and it says twenty-five thousand four hundred thirty-nine, those are all the students on the black common application that either have applied or shown interest in TSU. They clicked and maybe started, but didn't complete. And if you go to that next column, total application submitted, twelve thousand one hundred fifty-nine, those are the students from that population that actually have submitted an application to us. And so those are the one, those are the applications we're working through now, and you can see the total that have been completed. The next column over is seven thousand one hundred thirty. The total that have admitted, been admitted uh to date on that is four thousand seven hundred eighty-seven. And then those, the intent to enroll. Now, the intent to enroll is important, because that's the yield. And what our goal is for FY, for uh Fall twenty-four, is the same goal for first-time freshmen, is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. That was our goal for this um fall, that's what we achieved for Fall twenty-three. So we stayed on that goal. The goal for transfer students is uh three hundred and fifty.
So from historically, what's the conversion percentage from those who tell us they intend to enroll to actually show up? What's what's that number? Is it fifteen, fifteen percent dropout, or what is? I I'm trying to forecast.
Yeah, I I can get you that, I don't, I don't have it. But I I got numbers I can run based on history that I can do.
That would be a a good, a good number to have, so thank you.
That's not a problem, I can do that. Um, but really, good news story here. You can see the one thousand one hundred sixty, how close we are to the goal now of one thousand seven hundred eighty-three, and and we're here in February. Uh, if you go to the the incomplete application for the first-time freshman, what are we doing about it? And so you can see that right now, there's four thousand nine, nine hundred and five incomplete applications. Um, one thousand six hundred sixty-nine of those are transcripts, and and then the other are test scores that they haven't submitted. And there's a combination of students in here that have both, not done both. And so what we've done is communicated weekly to students about the missing documents, um text messaging them, um because we know that's what the young people like to do. And so we're actively calling uh those students, because we want, we want to get them here, and we're competing with other other universities and HBCUs. So we have to stay on them and communicate with them to get their application complete. Um, because I think if you just leave it out there, then they'll they'll find somewhere else to go. Um, so that process is ongoing, and we also um know about where these students are. So when recruiters go out, they go out to those areas, and hopefully those students will come out to those events, and if they need help getting the, we can upload transcripts and get all that done then. So we're really targeting these students with the incomplete applications to get them over the finish line, so we can get them at it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so are are we back on um requiring ACTs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We require, the only time that the you're you're, you can get a three-point-two, if you have a three-point-two, you get admitted, but you still have to submit your test score.
Meaning because we didn't acquire during the the COVID time period? Yes, it was back on.
That's correct. Requirement now.
So am I reading this correctly, General Evans, that for Fall twenty twenty-four, we are admitting the four thousand seven fifty-two at the bottom of page, is that correct?
Yes.
It on page eighty-eight, is that?
So, so, right, so here's the deal with that.
Okay.
Ad- admitted is different than intent to enroll.
Okay.
So once you get, so we, we're, we're projecting to get one thousand seven hundred eighty-three, we think we need a population of three thousand to intend to enroll, because, right? It, that's the, where you're getting the yield, because the student's now serious. They've met the application requirement, I'm now, I'm now intending to enroll. But you still have a summer melt, but we think it's probably about almost two to three to one to get what we need. So we, that's why we're trying to get the four thousand nine hundred and five, get them through, because we know we're gonna need students that have the test scores and the transcripts, and get them to intend to enroll, so we can get to the goal of one thousand seven hundred eighty-three.
Okay, I I just, thank you for clarifying, I got one other question. How are we looking in terms of the percent of out-of-state students compared to in-state? Are we improving on our in-state student enrollment?
I I would tell you, uh, since I've been here, and Lamar's done, Lamar, stand up. Lamar is the director of missions, he's done a super job of of really getting the science and and data analysis on this. What I owe you is that kind of analysis, but what I'll tell you, it it's lopsided right now. And some of that has to do with, we provide discounts, the two hundred fifty-mile radius discount. So you have Indiana, and you have Chicago, and or students in that area, and they're considered out-of-state. So we we have, we're well-known, we're a well-renowned university, and you provide an incentive for out-of-state students to be here, but it it's lopsided right now um in terms of out-of-state versus in-state.
Uh, let me add to that. Yesterday morning, we had a pre-meeting with uh the Senate Education Committee, and I, that was one of the items I followed up on, and I believe in the afternoon session. They were pretty brutal, having so many out-of-state students. So we have to let them know the same thing that that General Evans just said to you, that is, that we're an international organization, and students want to come here. There's a, they want to come back to HBCUs, and they so do, and they 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 choose the top, top HBCUs, and which TSU managed to be one, it happens to be one of those schools. So they choose TSU, they choose their record numbers. So we we're gonna have to try to control it, because, you know, I did commit to them that we want to keep that percentage basically evil or have more in-state and out-of-state, because the 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 way they view it, and I can't say they're wrong, so they're supplying a state school to, for students in the state of Tennessee, and we have to get some out-of-state students, we will. Well, you know, I think at one time, North Carolina, I think it was A and T got fined two million dollars for having too many out-of-state students. So we don't want to be in that position. So because we we are who. So because we, we are who we are, who we have, we have become, students want to come here.
Yeah, we, we, so, um, we'll, we'll need to adjust the recruiting strategy. But we spent a lot of time on our number-one recruiting city in Memphis. So we hold a lot of events up there in Memphis. Memphis is the number-one recruiting city.
No comments, anybody?
But so we spend a lot of time there and we're trying to cultivate getting quality students. And so you'll see on this next one that, um, compared to last year, that next block down.
My, my last question, I was getting more students from like the metropolitan Nashville area. I know we did an outreach to schools and things here.
There's a, there's an attempt to do that. We have a program with MNPS where, where we signed on to a hundred scholarships, um, for them, uh, full-cost scholarships in, um, the last couple of years. They did sixty-five last year and they're right at seventy-some this year. But I think if they can't use them all, to your point, we have other, in the metropolitan area where we can attract the kids, um, with those scholarships. Okay, so if you look at the, the next chart down, there's a comparison this, this time, uh, this time last year in terms of, um, the applications, uh, total admitted. And you can see, uh, there's about nine thousand admitted. We're about four thousand. It's really five thousand three hundred ninety-two as of today. So it's about six hundred forty more. GPA, we're a little higher than last year. ACT is about the same and SAT, it's about a little, little lower. So that's just a comparison in terms of the quality of the students. And then on slide eighty-nine, there's a year, the year, year-over-year comparison there for, uh, first-year freshman versus Fall, uh, twenty-four. So this time la- this time last year, they were at, um, and confirmed is really the intent enrolled. That, those are close, kids were close to yielding. You see last year they were at eight hundred fifty-four. This time we're at one thousand one hundred sixty. And then you can see the GPA and ACT.
Okay, Dr. Johnson, you had, um, you, you had questions about enrollment that I know you sent in writing. Does this address your questions that you had, sir?
Yes, I, um, Dr. Milton, uh, Professor Milton has provided me with some retention numbers that, that I thought were important to give. So thank you.
And then we'll get into the, the, the enrollment spring update. You can see the head, the count there, the head count last year for twenty-three and the head count now. Um, the, the spring term for twenty twenty-four, that number is six thousand two hundred fifty. And then if you go to the graduate rate, that, that number is one thousand one hundred eighty, just for correction. And then the slide below, uh, is the enrollment, uh, by classification. So total spring, spring enrollment for twenty-four is six thousand two hundred fifty.
General Evans?
So that's, that's how many students we project to have?
That's how many are enrolled for spring. Yes, so twenty-four right now.
We have six thousand?
Two hundred and fifty.
And fifty, uh, is that, um, full-time or is that total?
That's total.
Head count.
That's head count. Yes. It's both undergraduate and graduate.
Okay, do we have a projection, I mean, do we have a projection of where we might be for Fall? Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Right, um. No, I don't have the projection. Um, to the point of, of Will Rafford, we, we take the projection for twenty-five, twenty-five is out of the strategic plan and that the projection is about ten thousand total students and about seven thousand five hundred, um, that would be, um, undergrad. And so when you're talking, when you were talking to Will Rafford about what's the projection, we were using the projection that's in the strategic plan for twenty-five right now. And so.
So, that last year this time, it really kind of took us a task over having ten thousand students for our projection when we didn't have the housing. I, I knew where you were headed with that, but we didn't have the housing to support them. And so last year, yesterday when I testified to them, I told them we were gonna keep between eight thousand eight, two hundred. That's what we, we're thinking. That's what we can manage housing-wise. You know, most of, most universities don't make their decisions based on housing. We're kind of forced to do ours just for the sake of peace based on the amount of housing we have. So that being the case, you know, eight, two hundred is where we, where we can land and, and feel safe.
Well, I, so, I mean, we, based on the beds we have now, but looking into the future, we'll have more, we've got to have more beds so we can have more students.
Well, the only reason I brought that up is if you're looking for a projection out in the future.
That's right.
And Dr. Glover is right, we're not looking at ten thousand next year, but there probably needs to be more modeling done in terms of what the future number would be. But right now, the strategic plan of future number is around ten thousand.
Right, right, right. Um, so I think it will be helpful for, uh, for growth purposes and for planning purposes and for programs and all the things, you know, for that we'd like to have and we'd like to become, to, to begin to think about what that number is. Now, I, I always have a number in my head and it's twenty thousand students.
Right.
Uh, and I've been twenty thousand students for a couple of years now.
Right. I, I just think we need to probably do some more modeling.
Yeah.
All right. And I, I said, I was gonna, I was gonna speak to this, um, later on this evening. But I, I remember learning about, maybe about a decade or so ago, that TSU was projected to have almost close to fifteen thousand, um, around twenty eighteen. You gotta fact-check me on that information. But, um, I, yeah, but I, I, again, about a decade, a little bit more of a decade. I just, um, just concerned about the, this is not towards you, but I, I, I go into Mr. Pennox's point about growth, um, in reaching that twenty thousand. I, I know how this, this institution has premiered, but six thousand students. Uh, I've been saying nine thousand. Uh, I thought we were around that range. Um, so I just want to say that on record.
Yes, we, we, last, in Fall twenty-two, we had the nine thousand. We were on our way. But you, you know, they had to put their brakes on us because I, I have to keep reminded, we come out of COVID and we did the marketing to the students and the parents who wanted students to come to you this year. And we, we have become who we are. So it's difficult to tell students, no, we, we're reaching our limit now. We're eight thousand. That's the, that's the way that we can house. So, uh, we're hoping that it doesn't do us so much damage. If we can't come back and recover from that, two or three years time, we get a new residence halls, we can, we can really house more students. That's where we are now. That's reality of, of our legislation, what they put on us. We, we can have, you know, we're, we're governed, we're a creature of the state. So what to do with the state has in mind for us when it comes to housing.
And that's, and that's, what I was speaking towards is I just think that cap is, is wrong.
We do too. We think it's wrong too. But our solution is to just try to work with them to have them understand that other schools do things differently. And that we're, we're, we're TSU and we're doing the way they're asking us to. But that's not, that's by no means the model for other universities or for HBCUs.
Yeah, so it's a fine balance between what we were, we're limited by for housing and legislative thing. But it's, but it's also a, an important factor to be able to figure out what, what the minimum enrollment is for us to cover our costs. And I know Doug Allen is working on some software to be actually figured out, figure out our break-even numbers.
We basically know what that number is. It's not something we're releasing to the public. We know what that number is.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank.
Merit scholarships?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me, uh, let me do the, my perfunctory duty.
I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda is the, uh, merit scholarship update. Information regarding this agenda item is included in the board materials for the March fourteenth, two thousand four board meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This information is for discussion only. No vote is required. General Evans, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm, no, I, I apologize for jumping the gun there. So, uh, page, uh, we'll just get to page ninety-three. And that, this lays out the scholarship plan for, of twenty-four that was approved during the sixteen, uh, November board meeting. Uh, just to, just to go over it again, we added, uh, a tier three, which will help with sophomores and juniors and seniors. Because previously, these scholarships were solely for fresh, first-time freshmen. So hopefully you can, uh, prove, improve retention with the incentivization of that. Um, if you go to the next page, ninety-four, that just kind of shows you where we're at now. There's a total of, our budget is five million. Um, we've got four hundred and twenty. And, um, to date, uh, we've got, um, there's, you can see the, the, the number of offers, but the number of offers that have been confirmed, it shows you one forty-eight. The update of that is really, uh, one eighty-nine. So, um, we're making, uh, great progress. Holly Blakemore, Holly, you here? Stand up, Holly. She does a, an outstanding job of tracking these merit scholarships and getting them out and, and getting them back and getting them processed. And so I, I think we're looking pretty good. Um, we're almost fifty percent of, of the total, um, that we have right now. So I, I think we're gonna get through them, um, in the next few months.
Thank you for adding in the tier three. Um, the, the upperclassmen are, are a group that has been left behind.
Actually, that was, uh, Holly Blakemore's idea because of the number of students that come to her and say, hey, I need help. Um, and so we came to the board. Um, it makes sense that it is sophomores and juniors and seniors. It's really, I think it'll help with retention, particularly those kids that, that are quality kids. You hate to see a kid have to leave who, who has a high GPA and is a good student because they can't afford to be here.
General Evans, have we addressed the issue of clearly communicating, um, scholarships and how funds are applied? And, and if you have outside scholarships, that it's not refundable so that we don't have that confusion again that was brought up by the legislature?
So, so I will tell you from, uh, the merit scholarship standpoint, yes. Holly has rewritten the offer letters to be more specific about what this scholarship offers, um, and what it does not offer and what you have to do in terms of maintaining the scholarship, in terms of GPA and the number of credit hours that you have to take a semester. Um, it's all done in writing, uh, and it's recording. She sends out offers. We can even tell when they open it up. We have a, a piece of, of software now that we can tell how many times they've looked at it. Um, and so, um, and then we've provided, uh, for any exceptions, we've documented, uh, for any exceptions. Because we do have some seniors that get to their senior year and they only need, you know, six credit hours. And you don't want to penalize them because they can't get to the fifteen. But everything is, is codified and, and is tighter.
Thank you. And I'm assuming it's clear that it's last dollar in or not last dollar in. Right, right. So, thank you.
And I know we're way behind, but again, the legislature asked us separate questions yesterday about scholarships.
Right.
Well, it, it was more scholarships because Josh, the students getting purged. So as a student, it, it has gotten purged, the first thing that's always said is my scholarship wasn't applied. So we made sure we went back and looked at every single student that got, that, that weren't, that was on the purge list and they got purged. Uh, and we know, it was not our intent to purge anybody, but you know, they know the last thing I had to do is, is send a student home. So we make every effort, but there's just some balances just so high, there was nothing we could do about it.
Right.
And so we had to purge those students. And so we had to make sure, I think they're told, someone, they're told legislators that it was because their scholarship, their financial aid was not posted. So we went through each one of them and made, went through everybody on the list and made sure, we called and tried to get them to come by, sign your Scott, sign your financial aid form. Even if they have a financial aid pending, you know, some have forms that have not been signed yet. We just gave the students the benefit of the doubt. There were those, we just couldn't do anything more for them. We had to purge. And that's, that's a sad day for, always for a president, for a vice president, you gotta tell a student, you gotta go home. But we just let them know that there was no scholarship that was not posted so that we can put an end to that. And you know, there's a lot of misconceptions and miscommunications out there and a lot of it's deliberately done and we're aware of that. It's not always done by us at TSU. Sometimes done by others, sometimes done by those down there they're talking to.
Right.
And so we're, we're sure, we're clear on that. So we just do our best to, to work through that situation, let people know that, no, nobody got purged. We had a scholarship pending.
I've taken several of those calls and, and to your point, um, Madam President, um, some people didn't have scholarships that they thought they had when you go look at it.
All right. Any more money that we can give out in scholarships?
Well, so the plan is, is once we get to the five-million-dollar threshold, because, uh, and we've talked to VP Allen about this, we're gonna have kids on a, on a list that we're maintaining that have high GPAs and good scores. And we're gonna, we're about three million, three and a half million through that five million right now. So the plan is to come back to the board once we get to the five-million threshold. That's why we're trying to get the offers out quickly to beat the other schools to the punch and then come back and ask for more money. Because we'll have a list of kids that, that we would want to offer to.
All right.
All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is an update on the Personnel Action Plan. Information regarding this Finance and Budget Committee agenda item is included in your board materials for the March fourteen, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is an informational discussion only, so no vote will be required.
Okay, so continue, General Evans.
Okay, I'm on page ninety-eight. Um, based on the Board Resolution Report, you've, you asked us to do, um, in paragraph two, the purpose. That's what you asked. That's what was done. Uh, it's been prevented and presented in the last three, uh, board meetings. We've looked at the organizational structure, looked at performance, um, and looked at staffing and looked at some other general things. And so if you go to, uh, I go to page ninety-nine, um, you ask specifically about staffing on certain positions. You can see what's filled and what's in progress right now on page ninety-nine and page one hundred. Uh, no questions there, but, uh, I, you know, I just use a military term on page one oh, one hundred and one. Um, this is the proposed action on the objective. Um, if you look at the next steps, um.
When it says that position is in progress, does that mean that we're interviewing someone? Is that what that means?
Yes, ma'am. They're either interviewing or recruiting, uh, someone, but the recruitment action has, has been, uh, let.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Um, the next agenda, next item on the agenda is a report on Information Technology Replacement Plan. Information regarding this agenda item is included in your board materials for the March fourteen, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. President Glover, please provide pertinent information related to this agenda item. This is for informational discussion only. No vote will be required.
Hi, good afternoon. Tim Warren, CIO, Tennessee State University. That's a habit to say that. Uh, last board meeting asked for an infrastructure plan update. Uh, I'm passing out, uh, one that's a little more comprehensive than the one that's in your book. Uh, what we looked at was all the main infrastructure on campus. And you can see this one here is broken up by, uh, equipment, uh, from the main data centers uh, versus our firewalls, versus our internet access providers, versus our network cord switches, uh, the wired switches, the wireless. And then I break it down into funding. And you can see here, we currently have, um, twenty-four servers on campus. And that may not sound a lot, a lot, but these servers are virtual servers. So there are actually three hundred, uh, to four hundred servers running virtually under these servers here. Uh, they're all old. You can see we purchased most of them in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Uh, same with the backup servers on the, on the downtown campus. The, the firewalls are, are in, um, good shape. We just purchased those not long ago. And now you can see here, we've planned to do them in fiscal year thirty is when they do to be updated. So what we've done is, is we've gotten, uh, a loan, a zero-interest percent, zero-interest percent loan, uh, compliments of, um, Student Freedom Initiative. And, and they're helping out all HBCUs, uh, providing interest-free loans. And so we, we've already purchased, uh, three-point-three-two million dollars worth of Cisco equipment. It's gonna replace, uh, our servers. It's gonna replace the firewalls. It's gonna replace the routers. And you can see on my list here, we have, we have five internet routers going out to different areas. It's gonna replace our network core switches, uh, and, and all of our wired switches on campus, three hundred and sixty of them. And so that's gonna carry us out for the next five years for that infrastructure piece. I've also put down here our wireless network. We've got roughly twenty-nine hundred wireless access points on campus. Uh, I've got those broken out in FY twenty-five, twenty-six. We need to replace sixteen hundred of them in the rest halls. Those were some of the first ones we put out there. Uh, four hundred and fifty of them we need to replace in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Those are offices and classrooms. And then again, in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we have eight hundred and fifty, which are in the new buildings right now, that'll, that'll be due to be replaced. Uh, funding-wise, on the sheet I just handed out, you can see that we're, we've already purchased the three-point-three-two million in, uh, equipment with a, with a zero percent interest at six hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars a year. Um, we're anticipating server costs in, in FY twenty-five because we've already replaced, uh, five servers. Servers are a lot newer now than they used to be, so those five are replacing fifteen of the. servers out there. We need to, we need to replace eight more servers at anticipated costs of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The anticipated wireless access points for twenty-five, twenty-six, four hundred and fifty thousand. Anticipated WAPs costs for the wireless access points for twenty-six, twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. And anticipated wireless access points for twenty-eight, twenty-nine is two hundred and twelve thousand. And then the anticipated firewall costs will be about one point two million. So further down, I've listed funding per year. FY twenty-five, one million, one hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. FY twenty-six, nine hundred and sixty-four, not eleven, oh nine, one oh nine. FY twenty-seven, eight, eight forty-five, one oh nine. FY twenty-eight, seven, seven, three fifty-nine. FY twenty-nine, seven hundred and seventy thousand, three fifty-eight. And then in FY thirty, under one point two million to replace the firewalls.
Go ahead, Dr. Milton.
Yes, Tim, I wanna publicly thank you and your team for all of the support of building up our smart center. Without your team and that infrastructure, we would not be nationally known. So I just wanna say that to you, Mike Mead, and to your staff.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you again.
One of the things we did on our, on our internet about five years ago is we brought in a company to bring in fiber to our campus. We put the fiber from Pop in Nashville to our campus, fiber from our campus to the downtown campus, and a fiber from the downtown campus to the Pop in Nashville. So that's a ten-gig triangle there. So if we ever have any problems, we can reroute traffic either way. And that really helped with the downtown campus. Any questions?
Thank you. I think that's a great report. In looking at this, I see that, you know, there might be some questions later just related to growth. Some of this, some of these things seem kinda far out to me in terms of, I didn't think technology would last ten years or nine years. I thought it changed so fast, you know, we would have to replace them much faster. But I appreciate the detail in this report and everything you've done to support Dr. Milton and the rest of the university from a technological standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Cisco servers, Cisco servers is, is what most of the cloud vendors use in, in, in their cloud hosting environment. And they just tend to last forever.
Okay.
Eventually they quit being supported. That's time to get rid of them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any additional business for this committee? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm up.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. The question is on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
I take you seconded that motion then.
Second.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Corbell.
Hi.
Trustee Lewis.
Hi.
With three eyes.
Adjourn.